All right, thank you. Good morning, everyone. Welcome. It is a privilege, a real delight for us to be meeting today at the Student Technology Leadership Program State Championship. So much has gone into preparation for today, and as I look around the screen, I know that we have to make sure we were able to be here today, so thank you for that. We do have time scheduled later this morning to learn more about the STLP program, the championship, and to observe a few competitions and interact with some of the amazing students on the site today. So I know it will be a really memorable time for you and one that you will enjoy exceptionally for a board meeting today. We're honored to have with us this morning Allison Sloan and Soliana Bestman at the table, and they are special guests, but they're also family. They're not company. So they're with us today as the first teacher and student members of the Kentucky Board of Education. Their terms under the new statute concluded on April 14th. So we will take action later this morning on the selection of the 2022-23 teacher and student members who will begin their terms on July 1st. But we wanted to have Soliana and Allison at the table with us this morning, and then we're inviting them back in June for a presentation about their experience, much like we do with our Kentucky Teacher of the Year. So we're just glad they're back at home this morning. Additionally, while we await appointments for our four at-large members, whose terms also officially concluded on April 14th, the KDE Office of Legal Services has reviewed the situation and identified a prior legal precedent that we allow the four current at-large members to continue their service to KDE in holdover status and act as de facto voting members until their successors are appointed. A few notes for our meeting conduct today. As always, the meeting must comply with the requirements of the Open Meetings Act. Therefore, Kentucky Board of Ed members participating remotely must ensure their video is streaming and they can be seen throughout the duration of the meeting. We don't expect Mr. Johnson today, but Dr. Poe may be able to join us from time to time via video. KDE members, KDE staff, and all visitors. Oh, sorry, skip that one. KDE members and speakers came. Should have marked the masked ones out, sorry. Members participating remotely will mute their lines but not talk. All discussions, as always, must be broadcast to the public. For any items that require action, today, Todd, will we be able to do a voice vote?
Yes, with words.
Excellent, thank you. So those in favor will simply say aye, those opposed no. And please silence all other electronic devices at this time. All right, thank you. At this point, Dr. Bur, we're ready for roll call.
Joanna Adams.
Here.
Claire Vath.
Claire Vath, here.
Holly Glendworth.
Holly Glendworth, here.
Jamie Bowley.
Jamie Bowley, here.
Patrice McQuarrie.
Patrice McQuarrie, I'm here.
Sharon Robinson.
Sharon Robinson, here.
Lee Todd.
Lee Todd, here.
Steve Trimble.
Steve Trimble, here.
Lou Young.
Lou Young, here.
Amanda Ellis.
Amanda Ellis, here.
Make sure you do it before.
Excellent, thank you. The next item on our internal board business list this morning is brought to us by KDE General Counsel Todd Allen regarding outside employment request. And this one is for Mr. Trimble.
Pursuant to KDE policy and the Executive Branch Code of Ethics, KDE members are required to request approval of the appointing authority, which is the full board, before engaging in outside employment. We did receive one of those applications from Board Member Trimble, and that's in a portal for your review, as well as the full analysis of the requests and the applicable rules under the Executive Branch Code of Ethics. On that, I am recommending approval. If there are any questions, I'm happy to answer those.
Excellent, thank you. You all may recall doing this for others of us in the past. Any questions for Mr. Allen? All right, carrying none. Do I have a motion to approve this outside employment request? Still no.
Second.
I have a motion from Dr. Robinson, second from Ms. Bowley, and I do admit that Mr. Trimble, at this point, you would...
Chair, yes, I'll... You can refuse myself in this vote.
Excellent, thank you so much. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Carrying none. All those in favor of the motion, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Thank you so much. A little bit more of a treat this morning, and the next item on the agenda is the CAROM Award for Excellence in Education. So I'm happy to turn this over to Committee Chair Patrice.
Thank you, Chair Young. I will say, this is the most enjoyable committee imaginable because we get to see all of the amazing experiences taking place within the Commonwealth that all of support education. At this time, as all others, we were presented with some incredible applicants. David CAROM served on the Kentucky Board of Education from 2009 through 2016. He served for 33 years in the Kentucky State Senate and is Chair of the Senate Education Committee. During his tenure in the Kentucky General Assembly, CAROM championed the passage of Kentucky Education Reform Act, CAROM as we know it, and he led the efforts for 4% school tax levy by school districts. This award is given in the spring of each year to state policymakers, educational leaders, or citizens who have made notable state-level contributions to the improvement of Kentucky's public education system. The criteria for receiving this award includes, but is not limited to: demonstrated leadership in policy development, passage, or implementation resulting in increased educational opportunities for students, improved educational post-secondary or work course outcomes for students, or increased capacity of teachers or school staff to better meet the academic, social, or emotional needs of Kentucky students. On behalf of the Awards Committee, and I will say, before I name the candidate numbers, these applicants were stellar, and we have chosen to go with two. I would like to share that the committee met this past Thursday, April 14th, and determined that candidates four and five best met the criteria of the award. Therefore, I would like to move approval of candidates four and five as the recipients of the Kentucky Board of Education 2022 CAROM Award for Excellence in Education Policy and ask the Chair for the Board's approval to recognize candidates four and five at the Board's upcoming June regular meeting.
Thank you so much, Patrice, and to the members of the committee. As this motion came from the committee, it does not require seconds, but any discussion? All those in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Did I get a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Claire. It's a morning. All those in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Thank you so much. And keeping in step with the crazy morning that I seem to be having, I'd like to go back to the first item on the agenda to approve the summary minutes for February 9th, 2022 regular meeting, March 15th, 2022 special meeting, April 4th, 2022 KDE Application Review Special Committee, and April 14th, 2022 KDE Awards Committee meeting. All of those were distributed to you in advance via the portal. We have any corrections to these minutes? If not, do we have a motion for approval of all of these minutes?
I move accept the minutes.
Thank you, Ms. Glendworth. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. McQuarrie. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And also, Lieutenant Governor John Coleman, glad you're here, will note in the minutes that you are present. Getting us back on track, I hope, the next item on the agenda is the 2022-23 KDE non-voting teacher and student member. As I mentioned earlier, many thanks to Ms. Vath for chairing that committee, and I'll turn it over to her at this time.
Thank you. And this, again, was a terrible, terribly hard decision to make because we're losing our two members that we so value. The Kentucky Board of Education truly values having a teacher and student voice on the board, and we're so grateful to have those active members serving as our non-voting members. Our inaugural student and teacher, Soliana and Allison, will leave quite a legacy for our future members, and we wish to thank you. To be selected as the 2022-2023 teacher member, the applicant must be employed on a full-time basis by a Kentucky Public School District in a position for which the Education Professionals Standards Board, or EPSB, certification is required. Not employed in an administrative role and must reside in Kentucky's 6th Congressional District. To be selected as a 2022-23 student member, the applicant must be enrolled in a Kentucky public high school, be a junior in good standing on July 1st, which means that member must be a sophomore at the time of application, and must reside in the Kentucky 4th Congressional District. The KDE Commissioner's Student Advisory Council reviewed the applicants for the student position, and the KDE Teachers Advisory Council reviewed the applicants for the teacher position. A special committee from each group recommended three candidates for each position for our consideration. We appreciate the council's support of this process and their thoughtful review of each of these applicants, and they were tremendous. On behalf of the special committee, I'd like to share that the committee met on April 4th and determined that the teacher applicant number 10 and student applicant number 11 were the preferred candidates to serve as the 2022-23 student and teacher non-voting And we would like to ask for the Chair's approval.
Excellent, thank you. Thank you so much, Claire, and to the committee. Difficult task, but I'm sure a very enjoyable one. Once again, coming from committee, this motion does not require a second, but do we have any further discussion?
Yes.
All right, thank you so much. All those in favor of the motion, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. All right, so then, I think we can reveal. We are very excited to announce that Joanna Howerton Stevens, a National Board Certified teacher from Garrett County High School, and Jude Dalla of Florence will serve as the 2022-23 KDE non-voting teacher and student members. More information about Jude and Joanna will be coming out soon, but congratulations to them both, and we will look forward to their beginning their terms as of July 1st and seeing them hopefully at the June meeting as well.
Madam Chair, the narrative from these applicants is in the portal, and I just encourage everybody to read the narrative from the teacher and the student. They are really inspirational, and it alerts us that, as we have experienced with our student and teacher member this year, we've got special wisdom coming our way to join in our deliberations of the board.
I agree, Dr. Porter. Thank you so much, and that is a wonderful reminder. Special wisdom, indeed. They raise the bar just as Allison and Soliana did. Ms. Bowley?
Yes, I just wanted to say, this makes me a little sad because I'm truly going to miss Allison and Soliana. I think they've been a joy to work with, and you've added so much to the process here.
I agree.
And we are going to miss you.
Here, here. More celebrations than a few tears maybe in June, so thank you very much. Again, thanks for that process as well. At this point, we'll turn our attention to the good news items. Right? Oh, resolutions, too. Reading is hard. So in your portal, you will find two resolutions. Many thanks to the legislative team and to the communications team for putting together at the end of the legislative session these two resolutions that we would like your consideration today. The first of those is adoption of a resolution honoring Governor Andy Beshear. And, Todd, is it okay to do both of these together?
Yes, you serve him.
Okay, thank you. As well as a resolution honoring the Kentucky General Assembly. The first of those resolutions honoring and commending Governor Andy Beshear for his service to public education in the Commonwealth reads as follows: Whereas Governor Andy Beshear has made public education a priority of his administration from day one; and whereas the governor's leadership is critical to the state's public schools, teachers, and administrators' capacity to serve their students and to prepare them to be active, engaged citizens; and whereas the governor's actions during the 2022 regular session of the Kentucky General Assembly and the 2022-24 state budget are a reflection of his administration's commitment to public education; and whereas these efforts will empower our public schools to continue being the bedrock of workforce development by preparing their students for the workforce of tomorrow; and whereas the Kentucky Board of Education will continue to work to support the Commonwealth's public schools to ensure the state's investment in education pays dividends for all stakeholders in the years to come. And now therefore be it resolved that the Kentucky Board of Education does hereby adopt the resolution, this resolution, April 20th, 2022, expressing its sincere gratitude and appreciation for the dedication and efforts of Governor Andy Beshear to help provide the best education possible for all Kentucky students. The second resolution for your consideration today is a resolution honoring and commending the members of the Kentucky General Assembly for their commitment to career and technical education in the Commonwealth. Whereas the General Assembly's support is critical to supporting career and technical education programs and pathways across the Commonwealth, and whereas the 2022-24 state budget is a reflection of the value of career and technical education and the unique role it plays in preparing the next generation of Kentuckians for the future workforce; and whereas this budget will provide adequate and equitable funding for CTE programs and career pathways across Kentucky's secondary CTE system, including area technology centers, local area vocational education centers, and high schools; and whereas the Board of Education will continue to work to support these CTE providers to ensure the state's investment in career and technical education pays dividends for all stakeholders in the years to come. And now therefore be it resolved that the Kentucky Board of Education does hereby adopt this resolution, April 20, 2022, expressing its sincere gratitude and appreciation for the dedication and efforts of the Kentucky General Assembly in securing funding to help provide the highest quality career and technical education possible for all Kentucky students. Having heard those resolutions, I would ask the Board to entertain a motion to adopt these.
I want a motion to adopt those resolutions.
Thank you so much, Ms. Bowley. We have a motion. Ms. Bowley, do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Todd. On that motion and a second, any further discussion? Carrying none. Would you... All those in favor of the motion, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Again, thanks very much to the team for drafting these resolutions and for giving us the opportunity to share our gratitude for the work of the governor and the general assembly as they focus on these important elements of Kentucky's public school system. And now, we'll turn our attention to the good news items. We do just have one monitor today, but you guys each have your scripts, so we'll be able to follow along. And I'll turn it over to Claire for the first award, one of our own.
And this is a very special award. Oops. This is a very special award because it is for Sharon Robinson, one of our very... For those of you who don't know, Sharon Porter Robinson has spent five decades, almost five decades. Sorry about that. In education, in lifetime of civil rights work. In recognition of her work, Sharon was presented with the 2022 Lucy Hart Smith Atwood S. Wilson Award for Civil and Human Rights and Education on April 7th. The award was given at the 50th Kentucky Education Association, or KEA, Delegate Assembly Louisville during their diversity celebration. The Smith-Wilson Award is given annually to a person or organization that has made notable contributions in any of the following areas: encouraging and supporting minorities to enter the teaching profession; advancing opportunities, especially educational opportunities, for youth of color; initiating or continuing impactful work in the areas of human and civil rights; or leading in the field of innovative, creative, and equitable education for all students. Sharon began her career in education as a classroom teacher in Fayette County and continued in private educational research and advocacy organizations. Serving as President and Chief Executive Officer of the American Association of Colleges for Teacher Education from 2005 to 2017, she was the first Black woman to head the Washington-based nonprofit that represents more than 800 post-secondary institutions. She also was the first Black Assistant Secretary of Education with the U.S. Department of Education's Office of Educational Research and Improvement. Today, Sharon works with the Smith-Simmons College and Jefferson County Public Schools on minority teacher recruitment and development. We are so fortunate to have her as our Vice Chair of the Kentucky Board of Education. Congratulations, Sharon, on receiving this honor, and thank you for all the work that you've done for education and civil rights. We appreciate that. I'm so happy, so happy we were able to surprise surprise for other candidates. Honor to whom honor is very deserved, my friend. Thank you. Thank you so much, Claire, and congratulations, Sharon. And now, over to Patrice.
Thank you, Chair Young. December in the Commonwealth was not a typical one for us. You think back to that month, it was filled with chaos, storms, devastation, but at the same time, there were heroic events, and our educators stepped up and led the charge in many places. Yet another example of how important education is in our communities and in our Commonwealth. And this morning, I want to share with you something that one particular teacher did. Anderson County High School Science teacher, another Sharon, Sharon Southern. She had a 2004 Dodge Stratus that she had struggled with what she was going to do with that vehicle. And when the tornadoes ravaged Western Kentucky, she knew immediately what she needed to do. She drove four hours to donate her car to a survivor of the December tornadoes in Western Kentucky. Her school district helped her by putting her in contact with Grace County Sheriff John Hayden. She called Hayden, and she told him about the idea, and the next day, Hayden called her back, and he said, "I've got your person." Another perfect person, and that was Rebecca Marsala. Marsala worked at the Kendall Factory, and she was trapped under a concrete wall for five hours. Not only did she endure that, she also lost everything. Someone said that she didn't donate the car to get the recognition. She's probably not real thrilled would be talking about her today because she did it so selfishly, selflessly, but she did it because she knew it was the right thing to do. This act of kindness once again shows that Kentucky teachers will go to great lengths to help those in their communities and beyond. So I would like to recognize Anderson County High School Science teacher Sharon Southern for going above and beyond.
Thank you so much, Patrice. Another one of those stories of heroism and selflessness on the part of Kentucky educators. We'll never forget December 10th. The next item is over to Dr. Robinson.
This is one of my favorite parts of the agenda because it helps to remind us that there is so much to celebrate regarding education, educators, and the communities that we serve here in Kentucky. Kevin Daly is a social studies teacher at Valley Shannon Middle School in Boone County, and he was celebrated on February 23rd as the latest Kentucky educator to receive the Milken Family Foundation National Educator Award. This award includes a $25,000 unrestricted cash prize. Not many occasions to celebrate teachers with $25,000 unrestricted dollars. The award was presented to Daly in a surprise ceremony at his school that included students, faculty, district, and community leaders. The award was presented by Commissioner Jason Glass, Lieutenant Governor Jacqueline Coleman, and Milken Vice President Stephanie Bishop. Kentucky Board of Education member Randy Poe was also able to attend and add his congratulations. In Glass's words, "Mr. Daly works tirelessly in his pursuit of student success and in his intense desire to give back to his community." Not only does he challenge and engage his students through some of the most creative projects and innovative practices, he instills upon them and into them that the importance of being a good citizen. Daly teaches eighth grade U.S. history, and he has been on the faculty at Valley Shannon since 2019. Students leave Daly's classroom with a strong foundation that sets them up for positive experiences at high school. Many of his students take advanced placement human geography as ninth graders, and more pupils from Valley Shannon enroll in AP European History in high school than any other feeder middle school. I do say, he challenges them to be academic stars as well as stars as citizens. We're fortunate to have teachers such as Daly in our schools, and we are so happy to celebrate his accomplishment.
Excellent. Thanks so much, and congratulations, Mr. Daly. And Dr. Todd?
We have had two Kentucky teachers to win the prestigious 2020 Presidential Award for Excellence in Mathematics. And microphone presence here. Even more, we have mentioned that we have had two teachers to win the prestigious 2020 Award for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching. The award is the nation's highest distinction for teaching in science, technology, engineering, math, and so-called STEM classes in the rest of your science. The teachers are Jason Higgins, a mathematics teacher from North Calaway Elementary School in Calaway County. He's my father over there. And David Brian McDonald, Lieutenant Dow, who was a science teacher at Mason County Middle School, and he was nominated for the award. He now teaches at Island Middle School in Fort Thompson Independent School District. They are the only mathematics and science teachers from Kentucky who win this award. Higgins and Dow, along with others, recipients were recognized in a virtual announcement on February 24th. In the nice... I was actually ten a few years ago, and President Obama gave awards to the science and math winners in Washington, and they had a big event that day. He was occupied initially as a vice president. Biden, his wife, came in to talk with the teachers because it was carried a lot of significance here. Curious. the teachers because it carried a lot of significance here, a career background and her teaching experiences. Casey Higgins has spent her entire teaching career throughout elementary. She has taught fifth grade, school-wide interventions, and first grade. In her classroom, she challenges her students to explore mathematics independently in small groups and cooperatively to build conceptual understanding. Throughout the pandemic, Higgins took on the role as one of the lead first grade virtual teachers. She had developed virtual programs for the district and conducted classes. Ryan Dowd said the Presidential Award is validation of the kind of East Wind, right and grants to purchase resources, to develop relationships with community members to make experiences more authentic for his students and learning the skills needed to offer the latest technology and exploring strategies to ensure all students' needs are met. The work of continuous improvement is a tough but infinitely rewarding process, he said. Dowd currently is a STEM teacher and science teacher at Highlands Middle School and spent the previous 17 years of his 26-year teaching career facilitating STEM and science experiences for Mason County Middle School. So congratulations on these two, they make us look good on a national level as well.
Excellent, thank you. Thank you so much. And for the final good news items, item this morning, I'll turn it over to Miss Jones.
As we all know, it takes the village and in Kentucky, the educational support staff professionals are always supporting our children and our teachers and we're so fortunate to have them. And I am honored today to tell you about the winners of Kentucky Education Support Staff Professional Awards. Paul Rust and Velda Kissick received the 2021-2022 Kentucky Educational Support Staff Professional Award. Paul Rust is Director of Health Services for the Kenton County School District. She was honored on February 22nd. Velda Kissick is a paraprofessional at the Bluegrass Discovery Academy in Rowan County. She was honored on February 24th. Rust worked with the Northern Kentucky Health Department to create a COVID-19 decision tree for schools, which has been shared statewide. Kissick has gone above and beyond every day to meet the needs of her students. Rowan County Superintendent John Maxey said Kissick not only assists with academic instruction, but also works tirelessly to ensure students' social and emotional needs are met. The award was created in 2020 at the state level by Governor Angie Beshear and Lieutenant Governor Jacqueline Coleman to recognize the state's more than 46,000 classified school employees. The commissioner and Coleman were among those who surprised the winners with the award at their schools. Rust and Kissick's names have been forwarded to the U.S. Department of Education for consideration for the 2021 National Recognizing Inspirational School Employees Award. The winner will be announced by the U.S. Secretary of Education in the spring of 2022.
Excellent, thank you so much. Always a highlight of our meeting, as Dr. Robinson mentioned. And again, a special thanks to the communications team for shining a light on many great things that are happening across Kentucky, these are just a staple of all of that great work. The next item on our agenda is a report from the President of the Council on Post-Secondary Education. And with us today is Dr. Emily Ellis to share that report.
Thank you. Good morning and it's so good to be here. This is one of my favorite events for Kentucky and I think if you have never attended SCLP state competition before, it will blow you away with the engagement. So I'm so glad we're able to be here this year. So just a few updates, I know that we're close on time and have a lot on the agenda today. Of course, Dr. Thompson has already texted me that he wishes he could be here and to make sure to tell you all hello and that he is sorry he's missing. We concur with your resolution. Our CPE also extended a resolution in appreciation to the Journal Assembly and the Governor for such a supportive budget. You know, you never know the ebbs and flows of such a, we are very grateful for the investment in post-secondary education as we are in K-12 or K-12. I mean, we're very, very grateful, the whole entire education system receiving funding. So we're very grateful for that. We're looking forward to moving in the direction of using those research dollars that have been created to us, the KSU dollars, everything's already been put into motion, we've already started, hit the ground running, so we are very, very grateful. There's a whole list of things that were funded, but I will spare you that and make sure that's in your notes. The other thing to bring to your attention is last week, we did host our annual Student Success Summit in Louisville. This is something we typically do for our administrators and faculty of post-secondary institutions. We had a great turnout and actually our Student Success Collaborative, which is fairly new, really pulled this together and it was highly successful. I will tell you the highlight of the day, we had great keynote speakers just talking about best practice and innovation through collaboration. So when we were able to share that, I think it'd be good, actually, you know, Dr. Glass talked about United Good Learn and there's a lot around collaboration and the same topic and focus is bubbling up at the same, but being innovation, innovative through collaboration. And so that was the focus of our Student Success Summit as well. But to mention the highlight, I think, of the entire convening within our student panel and that student panel was facilitated by Dr. Thompson and Michael. And that was probably the most favorite because of a real conversation happening with real students, real college students of all ages and lived experiences that brought to light challenges and successes that really pushed the audience, I think, and all of us to think about how we can be better, how we can serve better our barriers. And so I'm really grateful for a positive convening and it was nice to be face-to-face again. Last year it was virtual and it was good that it's always good to be in-person and network and be able to learn together. We also had a GEAR Up Institute, as you may or may not know, we do have a GEAR Up Kentucky, one of three in the state. And so we did have a convening in March, felt like a long time ago, but we had students, ninth grade through 12th grade, and they got to do their own type of conference. GEAR Up serves first-generation, low-income, underrepresented minority students, the school districts that need a little extra support. And so we were so excited to have them in person, to have students be able to kind of do a convening with a group that works with them on goal setting and opportunities and access. The adults got to be in a separate section sometimes, sometimes we were all together just to really challenge ourselves to move over and out of COVID and hopefully start to refocus on future planning for students and opportunities and how we can really start reconnecting. And so it was a really positive, high-energy group and it was nice to come back together. So we did have that. We are still underway in our implementation of the strategic plan, our new revised strategic plan. We're able to share some of those first action steps with our council last week and moving that forward and building out deliverables around that. It's all very much a foundation around equity, equitable access to high-quality opportunities, affordability, all types of different areas that focus on that successful transition of post-secondary opportunities. And then we are also very excited with the support of KDE and some of the ARBA dollars and GEAR funds that we, from the continuum, have heard loudly that advising is really lacking, is struggling. And so now that we are back in school, we're getting our feet back under us, we realize it's really important to invest in the folks in our schools and equip them with all of the resources that we can in a timely manner to help advise our students. And so we have Destiny O'Rourke that we hired on early this year. She comes out of Bowling Green Independent, but with experience at Western. And Akeya Coach, which is like a unicorn, to have that type of experience. And she comes with amazing energy and passion for starting our Kentucky Advising Academy. So what that will be is to build capacity of the folks who are in schools, not necessarily just counselors, frisky coordinators, teachers, our certified, certified staff that work with students and equip them with resources and connect them with post-secondary. So we can start having those conversations and having some common language around options as students go through high school and come out of middle school. And so that will be through a podcast, through Zoom links. We know people can't leave their buildings, so we're trying to be as innovative as possible to make things available and be really nimble in meeting the needs of folks who are in the trenches doing this every day, they can't just leave and be gone for a day or two, it's really hard. And so hopefully you'll hear about this, we're going to be working with each region through the co-ops, of course, with a design team that's made up of all these amazing resources we have in the state and really come together to share those with folks who are with students every day. And so you'll be hearing about that, we'll start our podcast, it's called Well Advised. It'll be single topic and just in time with what's going on in the season of what students should be focused on in families, what they can be doing too. So stay tuned on that, we're excited and really appreciate the support and are encouraged. This is actionable things that are, this is one example of what's coming out of the continuum when folks come together to the table and really identify areas of improvement. So I'll stop there and be happy to take questions, but thank you for the time.
I love that report, thank you. Do you have questions for Dr. Ellis?
All right, thanks. I'm really vying on the theme of innovation and collaboration. It speaks to the work that this board's been doing for the past couple of years.
Thank you. And then also with us today is Lieutenant Governor Jacqueline Coleman and she will be presenting a report on behalf of the Secretary of Education and Labor.
Thank you so much. Good morning. After this, we're going to do a student mental health update. And so I'm just going to go ahead for sake of efficiency and I'll sit on that and look and Heather to come to the table and I'll join you when I'm finished with this. So first of all, I'd like to update everyone that the merger deal for the Education and Labor Cabinet's passed. And so the cabinet is now the Education and Labor Cabinet. And we believe that in doing this, we are going to be able to operate much more efficiently internally, which will allow us to better serve Kentuckians externally. There's a lot of intertwined federal programs and funds that were coming down through labor and through education and the state. And so it just makes sense to kind of bring them together and take some of that freight take out of the process to make things more efficient. And so it's good news that that has passed and Secretary Janie Lang will be serving in the role of Secretary of Education and Labor. Mary Pat Regan, who was my Deputy Secretary of Education, is going to stay on in that role as well and kind of marry the two areas in Kentucky. So that's great news. Second of all, I wanted to let you know that they are all at Ford today. And that's where they spend a lot of their time, they have weekly meetings with Ford. And today there are representatives from the Department of Education, from adult education, from workforce, and many others that are working together to get prepared for the gigantic economic development plan that Ford is going to put in Kentucky. I actually saw my first Ford electric battery commercial this morning and I got really excited because it was, you know, very innovative and exciting. I thought, my gosh, Kentucky is the epicenter of that work. And so that was kind of a proud moment for me. So they are working on that today and they work on it every, every week. They're developing curriculum, they're working with local schools in the area as well as training and pipeline programs to help prepare Kentuckians to fill those jobs in the future that are here, which is exciting. The Kentucky Workforce Innovation Board continues to engage employees. They now have, and this is again one of those benefits of bringing the cabinets together, even more experts on apprenticeships on hand because of that merger. And so they're continuing to work with apprenticeships as well. The very first manufacturing collaborative meeting was held yesterday with the announcement of Ford as well as Envision that we just announced last week, which is a $2 billion investment coming to Kentucky as well to help with electric batteries manufacturing. We're going to have a lot of opportunity and so we're ramping up to prepare for that. And last but not least, the Governor's Office of Early Childhood and the Cabinet for Health and Family Services continues to partner on early childhood programs. I heard in the acknowledgement of the work that was done at this session, how many good things came out of it. One of our misses was that we missed the opportunity to incorporate universal pre-K for every four-year-old in Kentucky. And I know that that, I just saw, Patrice, take a deep breath over to your early childhood expert, but that is one of the things that we will continue to work on and fight for. And I know everyone in this room is an advocate for that. But in the meantime, the Governor's Office of Early Childhood and the Early Childhood Office and CHFS continue to work really hard on those programs, opportunities for our kids. So we'll keep plugging ahead on that. And that is the update for the cabinet. So I'm going to leave over.
Slow write it, hey? All right, as Lieutenant Governor joins her people. We are delighted to hear recommendations from the Lieutenant Governor's Student Mental Health Roundtable Work. And so I will ask Lieutenant Governor to introduce her team this morning and then go ahead and open that report.
Sure. Expect no disappointment, transition time on this one, guys. So first of all, let me start by introducing some of the folks who were integral to this work. First at the end of the table is Heather Dearing and she is serving in the role of Deputy Secretary in the Lieutenant Governor's Office. She has a wealth of knowledge and experience from working in the Cabinet of Health and Family Services with this work and this could not have happened without her, that she has really been the person that has put the nuts and bolts together on this work and is probably turning red as I say that, but she really has been integral in this work and these students will tell you that. Next, we have Logan, he is a member of the Student Advisory Council and of course you all know Soliana, she is one of our members on this committee and serves in the role of the, on the Student Advisory Council as well. So my role today is to tee these two up and I'm going to turn it over to them afterwards. But I want to kind of give you some context about where this came from. Well, we talk about, we've had a lot to talk about mental health through the pandemic. Our focus has certainly been on student mental health and the mental health of young people in our schools. We all know in this room what a challenge the pandemic has presented across the board of many areas. I would argue none possibly more important than this in working on very young people moving forward. And so just to give you an idea of what was going on pre-pandemic, which seems like 100 years ago. Before the pandemic in 2019, the CDC reported that one in five American children had a mental disorder like depression, anxiety, or substance abuse. But only about 20% of them received care. And so that is where we find one of the barriers that we are, we are working on. The Kentucky Youth Risk Behavior Survey took place and we learned that 30% of high school students in Kentucky before the pandemic reported feeling sad or hopeless to the point of stopping usual activities, which is a red flag. 57% of students in Kentucky ages 12 to 17 reported a major depressive episode and did not receive healthcare. So that's again, another major red flag. 15% of high school students reportedly seriously considered suicide. And we know that suicide prevention is one of the pillars of this work. And so what we also learned is that students wanted help, but they didn't know how or where to get it. And so again, that formed one of the important pillars of this work for us as well. Another one is that stigma and talking about mental health has been a serious challenge for our students. They didn't know where to go, who to talk to, and also they were afraid to talk about it because it was something that was not normalized. There was also City, another student voice team, another great group of student, I would say activists, advocates. They reported during the pandemic, so now we're in 2019, moving into 2020, that students in Kentucky felt more unmotivated and stressed and anxious, but they also felt more grateful. And I think what that shows us is maybe there were teams at school and sports and clubs and friends might be something we all took for granted before the pandemic. And I think students began to realize how much that was an integral part of their everyday. 45.8% of poor students in Kentucky reported feeling depressed compared to 26.5% of middle-class students. So double the amount for students who are in a lower socioeconomic range. So in tandem with the increase in emotional distress, there was also an increase in incentive for mental health services. And so here's kind of the backdrop that we're working with, and I'll discuss more about this later when I talk about the big picture, but at the national level, and I would like to point out, Kentucky was at the cutting, was on the cutting edge of this right with the national movement, one of the, one of the few states who was. the national movement, one of the few states who was. But the American Academy of Pediatrics, the American Academy of Child and Adolescent Psychiatry, and the Children's Hospital Association declared children's mental health a national state of emergency. So that tells you what a critical focus there is on this at the national level. The U.S. Department of Education released a report titled Supporting Students' Social, Emotional, Behavioral, and Mental Health Needs as a kind of a response to that, national state of emergency. And the U.S. Surgeon General released an advisory titled Protecting Student Mental Health. This was all happening at the same time students were returning to the classroom. So this boiling point, of course, as usual, is happening in our schools and it's reaching critical mass in our classrooms. And so in 2021, we went on a state tour for the Student Mental Health Action Summits, and that is where these guys come into play. As a teacher, before this role, I was anticipating what it would be like if I was still in the classroom. I have students in my home, you know, kids that I knew were going to school, and I've thought about it through their eyes. And as a member of the Board of Education, of course, we see things much more holistically, and our scope is much larger, and so I was imagining this on a statewide scale, sitting in this chair and knew that the challenges ahead of us were big. And one of the biggest concerns I had was there were, we were increasing the conversations around mental health, but we were talking about student mental health from adult to adult. We weren't talking about student mental health with students. And so that's where this script came into play. And so the Department of Education Student Advisory Council was our most critical partner in this, and I would actually call them the leaders in this work. And so I want to thank you, Commissioner, for loaning us these experts because they really have driven this work. We have lots of partners in this work as well, the educational cooperatives across the state. They were our on-the-ground partners. They really operated as co-hosts with us, helping us to root these events in their community. The Department for Behavioral Health at CHFS offered us help in finding a mental health clinician that we provided at every single event to make sure that our students had someone to talk to should they need it, which was really important. The Division of Family Resource Youth Service Centers, where our first keys through CHFS, also helped us provide an adult for each breakout session. Their role was the role of scribe. They had no speaking role, they were there to help us take some thematic notes, and most of those roles were filled by first keys. And, you know, they're our angels without wings in our schools. And so this truly, I think, joined us, it takes a village, and our village is mighty across the state of Kentucky. And so I'm going to turn it over now to Soliana to tell you all a little bit more about the events themselves.
Yes, thank you so much, Lieutenant Governor. Hi, everyone. It's an honor to be here. So here we have our events, and I'll dive deeper into that. So basically, what you see on the slide is that we held 10 events across the state of Kentucky, and attendance was largely regional, so amongst our different cooperatives. But we did host one virtual event, which was open to students across the state. Oh, and yeah, so the majority of these meetings and breakouts were done in person, but due to COVID surges at the time, some had to be turned to virtual, but we mainly left those to the region to decide whether that be best for, to have the meeting. So of our 10 events, seven were in person and three were held virtually over Zoom. And we had about 375 students register, which was not a requirement that we had, but it was recommended upon arrival to the meeting. And of those 375 students, about 300 attended, which is great attendance. And amongst all of our meetings, we had at least about 25 breakout sessions at the event, which I'll go into further detail momentarily. So the format of the event was pretty standard. So at each event, Lieutenant Governor would frame up the issue for that is at hand and describe it to those in attendance. And then we would have one of our student advisors kind of also present some data to support the issue at hand. And then that's when we would go into our breakout sessions, which mainly contained about five to 15 students, depending on the region. And each breakout session was facilitated by students, so like Lieutenant Governor said, every discussion that went on went on by student to student. And we did have one adult in the room, but they were simply to take notes or to be the timekeeper. So yeah, and basically, it was really fun. We had these introductions and the icebreakers, and the student facilitators basically led these groups into a series of discussions about mental health, and participants were able to describe in detail about their experiences, their peers' experiences, and then we would report back to the main group later on. Also, I would like to point out, Lieutenant Governor said before that there was a local mental health clinician at all of these events. So, and this was slated before we entered the breakout session, so students had the opportunity to see a mental health clinician at any time, at any point in time of the And now I would pass it on to Logan.
Yeah. And so once we got into those breakout sessions, we had about six questions that we really wanted to, that we could ask, and you can see in the green, those were our lower priority questions, and those were, I guess, our extra questions, for lack of better words, that if we got to in that time, we would get to those. But we had four primary questions that we really wanted to kind of talk to the students about. And so our first question that we asked was, how does your school, home, or life in general affect your mental health? And so some of the responses, we got, as you can see, like a spread of papers here, we got quite a few responses, but I'm just going to cover a few of those. And so for that first question, we found that extracurriculars and non-academic things in school were very helpful for students. They found a sense of community and friends and fellowship within those. Other kind of responses that we got were that schools can positively affect students mentally, and that they can also negatively impact those, which isn't, you know, an uncommon response, whether that be like routine activities and socialization for the positive side, or the bullying, stress, and those types of things for the negative side. Our kind of third really prevalent response was that the transition back into in-person school was kind of challenging for students. And I think that's just important to still note, just because as we have been in-person school for quite a while, we are still in that kind of transition time and can really help students come out of that, I guess, better than they were before. And so for that, those were kind of the responses we got for the first question. But for the second question, we asked, what mental health challenges have you or your friends faced in the past year? And so that was kind of our question to really target the COVID-related responses and how that affected their mental health. So as you can imagine, we got low motivation, a lacking sense of accountability were some really prevalent answers. And then another one that might not immediately come to mind, but definitely could be seen from COVID, was eating disorders and how they really kind of may have increased during the pandemic or like shifted from their normal routine. But those were a couple of prevalent questions and feedback we got for the second one. And for our third mental health question, we had, what mental health resources do you wish you had access to at school? And so we kind of, I guess, got some that we were expecting, some that were a little bit more interesting. And of course, our really top answer was mental health days for students, which of course we had Hospital 44, that was recently passed, and it's definitely a great step in the right direction. And later, we will note that students also were talking about mental health days for their staff as well, and students and teachers. So we also saw that in addition to just the students talking about themselves, they really also saw the mental health of their teachers and other staff were important for them as well. And with that, they would like to see more trainings for both the students and the staff around mental health. In addition to that, we, the students would like to see mental health clinicians at every school. They can visually see their counselors are very overwhelmed with scheduling and testing and all those extra jobs that counselors pick up, and would really like to see a sole job and person at school dedicated to mental health. And then lastly, they would like to see peer resources, so people that they can talk to, their peers, and not necessarily adults, just that they feel maybe that they can trust a little bit better and connect to. So those were the responses for questions. And then for our last question that we'll talk about today, it was, what recommendations on mental health do you have for policymakers? And so this was kind of their time to shine to say, you know, in a perfect world, where would you like to see the, you know, our legislator go with mental health in the state of Kentucky? And a lot of them, we found, were very similar, whether it be regionally or statewide. And so we found that they would like non-academic breaks throughout the school days. Many talked about how they only have 20 to 25-minute lunches. By the time they get through the line, the lunch line, they'll have 10 to 15 minutes to eat. Starved, don't have food, and barely any time to actually socialize with peers. So they would like more non-academic breaks during school. Again, a mental health days and allowing those for not only staff, but also students, greater access to mental health clinicians, but not only just the access to those, access to assessment, diagnosis, and treatment. One of our student advisors put it very well when she said that mental or diagnosis is a privilege, and so not everyone has access to the clinicians or the doctors that can really diagnose them and help them with that. So having those people in school would definitely help students. Lastly, we have updated suicide prevention training. Many account for, you know, the training's being outdated. Some can be very triggering for students who might be considering suicide. And so with that, we wanted to make more frequent, comprehensive, inclusive, and diversify the delivery for students in their mental health or suicide prevention training. So those are kind of the, I guess, big idea priority questions that we kind of talk to students. We also had two others, as well as we sent out a form with all the questions where that they could kind of type the responses out again if they wanted another kind of, I guess, confidentiality response. And so from that follow-up form, we found that students overall said that we really helped normalize talking about mental health with their peers. And so sometimes they knew people in the rooms, other times they had no clue who the other people were in there with them, but at least speaking about it with other students really helped to eliminate the stigma or that they could take back to their school. So after hearing kind of the questions that we asked, you may be wondering, like, what did we do with all of this stuff? And so we first, we immediately took all of the data that those scribes wrote down, and we kind of captured all of that and put it all together. We then met with the students, the Lieutenant Governor and Heather Dearing, to really talk about kind of the themes throughout all of the responses. And we found that some were kind of regionally, we had different regions that said similar things, and others were very like statewide. We then worked with the students and the staff to really kind of create, take those themes that we saw throughout the data and really create recommendations around those, all while doing the research and the rationale behind those and making sure that, you know, maybe Kentucky's not the only one, we looked at other states to see what they were doing and that type of research. We then presented those recommendations to Lieutenant Governor, and then along the way, we'd like to say we kind of kept it a secret, so we kind of maybe not so publicly kind of shared a little bit of the findings along the way. And then, but you all are in luck because you all are, I guess, the first public group to hear the kind of overall recommendations. And so we are obviously kind of limited on time, our full presentation's like 90 minutes, so we have 20 minutes, so we're going to do a very abbreviated version of the recommendations today. But you'll see that while these are recommendations of our full recommendations, we have a total of 10, and they're a lot more specific. But they are all, and as you can see on the slide, they're built on the foundation of including and elevating student voice. We just found that that's a very critical thing when talking about students and student mental health, that you really have to include to make our recommendations, and we feel that we've done that along the way by including our student advisors in the process, as well as all of our roundtables to talk to students. So I'm going to pass it back to Soliana to talk about the recommendations.
Yes, so, oops. Thank you. Yeah, so from these, we've kind of cultivated nine to 10 recommendations. And so our first one is to allow excused mental health absences. And that was something that was really big, and we saw it in the legislative session as well. Increase mental health awareness and education, so relating to that stigma and prevalence, of course, and expand access to mental health services and treatment, because of course we didn't hear a lot of students who had access to that. Offer increased and improved professional development to educators to update the information, and update and improve suicide prevention curriculum, so just making sure it's up to date. And then other recommendations that are listed here are offer mental health check-ins from staff to student or student to student, offer mental health breaks within the school, and increase awareness and support for eating disorders as well, and to prioritize and improve school culture and climate. So those are what we have right now, and so I will pass it on to Lieutenant Governor to fill this out.
So here, first of all, let's hear it, please. I didn't even tell you, they are two of many that have done some great work on this, and so, you know, not everyone could be here today, but they're the best of the bunch of students. So before we look at the bigger picture here, these are the documents and events that I mentioned earlier. I want to acknowledge and ask for grace on this because I want to reiterate that we don't know everything. This issue is still evolving, the pandemic itself is still evolving. And so we are working with KDE to identify areas where we might overlap and have some more interest and be able to support students in that way. In fact, since we started to build these recommendations, you know, we're looking at avenues, so where can we, where can we get this done? You know, what avenue can we need to go down to address this issue? And what we've learned is KDE has a lot of resources that are available, and they've done a lot of work around this. And so one of the things that we need to make sure that we do is amplify that work and help them, you know, increase the conversation, reduce the stigma, those types of things. But we also know that we're not working in a vacuum. This is the State Board of Education here, Student Advisory Council, the Department of Education, the Governor's Office, and the Legislature. They passed some legislation discussion that will be helpful and will be first steps in addressing these issues. So I think it's really important to point out, in October of 2021, if you all see the timeline there, all of this happened on the same day. And so this is a very coordinated effort at the national level that we are working in tandem with here in the state of Kentucky. President Biden's White House released a fact sheet that is titled Improving Access and Care for Youth Mental Health and Substance Use Conditions. And they announced how they were going to utilize American Rescue Plan funds to support youth mental health and create mental health resources for schools. They are also committing in this work to continue to improve youth mental health, to expand access to affordable, quality services across the continuum of prevention, treatment, and recovery, and eliminate stigma. The U.S. Department of Education, again, same day, released a report called Supporting Students with Social, Emotional, Behavioral, and Mental Health Needs. And again, same day, the American Academy of Pediatrics declared national emergency, declared national emergency in child and adolescent's mental health. In December of 2021, on heels of this, the U.S. Surgeon General Advisory came out about protecting youth mental health. And in February of 2022, the Center for Disease Control and Prevention declared children's mental health a public health concern. And they actually reported that they found poor mental health among children continues to be what they refer to as a substantial public health concern. So in March of 2022... So in March of 2022, the State of the Union address that President Biden delivered talked about the national mental health crisis. And you know, it makes it into the State of the Union address, not only is it a big deal, but it's something that we're going to continue to address moving forward. And he talked about the nation's mental health crisis. He talked about strengthening the capacity of the system, about connecting more Americans of all ages to mental health care and to create healthier environments at work, at school, at home and online. And I think the pandemic also probably taught us a little bit about that as well. On the heels of the State of the Union address, the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services announced a more detailed strategy to address mental health. They announced a joint effort with the U.S. Department of Education to ensure that children have access to school-based services. And so again, you see this over and over reiterated about a national priority. And it's also a major Kentucky priority. As you can tell, we're moving in lockstep with this timeline. And so what's next for the student mental health care in Kentucky? This is what we have upcoming, and we want you to be involved, you know, that you would strengthen this conversation. So first of all, we're looking at the implementation of House Bill 44. This was a bill that was co-sponsored bipartisan support by Representative Cool and Representative Willner that addresses the issue of mental health absences in schools. It is the first step of many that we need to take, but it's certainly the first step. So we're excited to move forward with that. We have upcoming student mental health initiative briefings. You guys are the first to hear this. And so we're also going to be giving these briefings to the entire education community. So that's going to include the co-ops that hosted us, the K groups, that all of the KDE advisory groups that work within the Department of Education. So we've got a lot of partners we're going to pull in on this. And it happens to be perfectly coming because May is Mental Health Awareness Month. And we are going to have an event in the Rotunda on May 12th, and we'll have more coming out about that, but it's going to highlight this work. And it's also going to highlight the work that we've got ahead of us moving forward. And then in the summer, the Student Advisory Council has been invited to present to the General Assembly interim Joint Committee on Education. And so they're going to present this work to the Legislature as well in hopes of working, again, within the education community and the policy arena to move these recommendations forward. And so now, Soliana and Logan have some questions for me, but.
Well, how can you all help us make sure that what we've talked about in the recommendations that we have came to the conclusion of get implemented in our schools and really help our students be more successful and just feel more comfortable in the school environment? So I guess our main question is what will your role be in moving these recommendations forward?
I love the question. I love the report and the recommendations. I think we have several different policy angles that we explore, but for a really practical and immediate response, I think we can communicate this. I was already wanting to talk to the Governor, you know, how can we get this on? The Kentucky Association of School Administrators Summer Institute. We need to present this as a session for school administrators who, but sometimes thousands attend the School Supervisors Association, making sure that we are promoting this at a local level with the endorsement of the Cabinet for Education and Labor as well as Kentucky Board of Education, of course, with prominent support from the Department of Education. So, you know, I think picking up this message as our own and promoting this message to all who will listen is an immediate first step that we can take. Others may have thought of some other, may have been spurred to action as you heard this morning as well.
Check them.
Yes, please.
Dr. Perry.
Dr. Bad and I serve on subcommittee for KDE, the whole school, community, whole child subcommittee. It's made up of every round service you can imagine with students in our schools. I think it would be an excellent idea for you all to make a presentation to that committee as well.
Chair Yana.
Yes, Dr. Robson.
I certainly commend this work, and I appreciate so much that the student has been at the center, the anchor, the perspective, the point of concern that really matters. And so I didn't hear that we are thinking about how do we engage with those who are developing teachers for the future? I mean, we've got to understand that students universally have experienced a degree of trauma that is quite different from our experiences as children, even my own child. This is a, this is a different learner coming to us than those that were idealized perhaps as we were preparing to become educators. We now have to embrace that learner and learn to serve and support that learner in ways that go beyond content mastery and even skill mastery, but goes to the point of being able to manage the current context. So I would like to volunteer to champion that message to those who are developing the education workforce, both veteran and prospective, because we've just got to get outside the romance of education and into the reality of it and the needs of the students that meet us right now today. And I want to encourage you to continue this conversation with policymakers because they have to understand that reality as well.
Well, you're hired. And what I give Dr. Robinson is, I tell my students that, or these students, not my students, these students, that I would be happy through my teaching career if I were still in the classroom. And I have a bachelor's degree, certification in education, a master's degree, and I'll have a doctorate if I ever finish earning my dissertation. All that said, I've never had any training, any professional development, any support around, I see Allison nodding, around student mental health. And so when we talk about, but I have a little more precedent training every year, right? And so once it makes it into the rotation, it becomes, it bubbles up to the top of our priorities. And so I think that's something that we've got to make sure that, and also from a teaching perspective, we've got to make sure that the professional development is relevant and it's not piled on the plate, right? As we add, there's some things that we may need to scale back on for priority. You can't have everything as top priority, right? It's reality. That's the reality, not the romance that you're talking about.
Excellent. Yes, Dr. Glass.
Thank you. I wanted to highlight the work that David Sweeney and Christine Wier have done around state and supported this in the past through KDE. I think that we have to look at, as we do many things in education, through those sort of multi-tiered plans, that there are supports that all of our students should have in place and that every one of our educators and people working in the school system could see themselves as a mental health first aid provider. There's a level of support that you can provide to everyone. And several of our educators need training and support around what that looks like or how they would engage in doing that. So I think that's a, that's a good first step is to think about how we can provide a universal level of support for everyone. Of course, you have some students that will be higher, need higher risk, and so that needs to be the ability for our educators to refer a student who's at higher risk to someone with greater expertise who can provide that additional support. There needs to be staff in buildings and districts and in regions to do that. And then we will have some students that will be in a really urgent place and need a high level of support, and there needs to be staff that have that very specific high need referral as well. So I think directly to your question, what can we do? It's in the continuing to develop and put in place supports that run from universal to more targeted, to more urgent or high needs and make sure we've got, you know, what the, yes?
Yes, Ms. Sloan and then Soliana.
As a teacher in the classroom, I will continue to champion student voice. I will continue to be a role model for other educators at district level, my school statewide, as someone who provides a safe place for students at any time. And I'll continue talking to other educators and teaching them the importance of that for you all and for early childhood in the state. So that's something I will achieve.
Excellent. Thank you. Ms. Nesta.
Do I have to run over there?
Yes, I would like you to run back over.
No, no, I just want to reiterate what Allison and Dr. Glass said. I think this is a very urgent matter and thousands, hundreds of thousands of students are impacted by this every day. And it's, we simply can't wait on legislation on, even though planning's very important. But I think this is something that needs to be done immediately, and I know that this is something that we prioritize as well. But I also think we have to work on spreading the conversation. I know this is just, you know, the foundation of it, we're building from here, but I would love to see just hitting a large array of students, you know, just telling other students what we learned from this, how to be facilitators, how to start that conversation in your schools, and how to work towards doing what's right for your community locally or district-wide. So it really, I think it truly goes back to student voice and how we can provide those resources from, you know, different organizations, different entities, and how, you know, we can provide that for students to be able to start that conversation in any community that they're in.
Excellent. Thank you so much, everyone. Another round of applause for this team. And one thing as we wrap up, if anyone here has, if you go home and you think about this and something comes to your head, you have a suggestion, you have an offer of help, if you want a pledge to get on payroll like Dr. Robinson said, you can email Heather Dearing. She, her email address is up there, and we're looking for feedback. We want your feedback and expertise, connections to, you made a great point about working with the leadership summits this summer, Dr. Yana. Those are things that we want to hear. And so if you have any thoughts after this, please send those to Heather.
And I'll ask Meredith to send us a copy of the presentation from today as well as Heather's email address for those of you who want to follow up. And just thanks so much for the personal commitment that I heard from, where members expressed today's response. I tried tweeting hashtag make mental health a priority, I'm a bit of a writer, but let's turn it into that. So again, thank you so much. We really, really appreciate all of the effort.
And top that. The next report is Dr. Glass.
After that, I asked the board to lower your attention. Thank you, Dr. Yana. We have an update on the legislature coming up later, so I won't spend, see enough time talking about that. We were pleased with the budget that was passed that included an increase to seat spending, a significant increase to career technical education funding. Of course, it included the whole day kindergarten, the continuation of that, and a substantial increase in school construction. So there were some positive things included in the budget for K-12 education. I want to also update you on KDE's United Learn initiative. United Learn is a vision for a future of public education in Kentucky that was put together by Kentuckians. The vision builds around three central themes. The first is creating a more vibrant learning experience for every student, encouraging innovation in our schools, especially when it comes to assessment and accountability, and finally, creating a global future through collaboration with communities. So those are the priorities that were raised by Kentuckians. And of course, we're all listening to, we're all to the work of the Coalition for Advancing Education. They are shaping the work that we do at the department going forward. Building on the strength and success of our initiatives today, education stakeholders around state are working on ways to enrich student experiences in schools and improve learning outcomes for all students. Some notable examples of that include the work that the local laboratories of learning have underway in designing community-based learning and design assessment accountability systems, continuation of the Kentucky Coalition for Advancing Education, a broad stakeholder group who authored the United Learn report, and our work with, through COVID relief funds around bringing PPL works to scale around the state, hopefully to train a third of the educators in the state on problem and project-based learning and changing the student experience and student tasks, and the work that has begun with our co-ops around the state around people learning to really build a system of supporting people learning across Kentucky. So some very tangible ways that this, the concepts that were in United Learn are underway. United Learn means everyone in our community, educators, families, community, business leaders, working and learning, most importantly, learning together in support of our public schools and bringing authentic learning experiences to our students. So that is our update on United Learn. I'll turn to our ATCs. They are extremely busy this time of year, as is everyone working in a school in any form. This is what I often felt like was a sprint at the end of the marathon this time of year. Students are participating in career technical organizations, CTSO, state conferences right now. These CTSOs are not only instill leadership traits, but also an opportunity for the demonstration of skill attainment awards and scholarships. Presently, there are several project-based learning activities taking place at ATCs. I've often felt like the kinds of shifts that we'd like to see happen more broadly in education around making student experiences more authentic and real. Already, we can see those in our career technical education centers. We've seen them in using our education as well. Oftentimes, you'll see them in alternative education centers. There are great examples of the kinds of shifts that we'd like to see come to scale all the time we look for it. But the PPL initiatives in our ATCs require students to work collaboratively as a team and with the public to solve a problem. At Campbell County, the Campbell County ATC, student and carpentry have designed and are building a platform where local students with wheelchair bound. At the Mason County Career Magnet School, the PBL there involves welding, electrical technology, carpentry, automotive technology, collaborating with the local district to build a food truck, which I'm sure students are excited about that. The truck will be used by the Mason County Schools Culinary Arts Program to cater to events and serve food at different district student parks and facilities. And in both the districts where I was superintendent and chair, the students always came forward and said they wanted to build a food truck. So I know it's a high priority issue. High priority issue. Martin County's ATC, PBL builds tiny houses. Their latest ones expected to sell for $50,000. The sale goes through as expected. They will fund next year's project to provide the needed materials and supplies to keep that program moving. Murray and Callaway County ATC is highlighting their culinary arts, school-based enterprises. Students will be hosting a pop-up restaurant for patrons, offering a five-course fusion meal, including French and Italian cuisine. Several ATCs have already reported record industry certification attainment, which is a testament both to the staff and student dedication, especially emerging out of the pandemic. So we're excited about what's happening at our ATCs, and we expect even more of that safe place with the record level of funding that we had come from the West Side. Shifting to the Kentucky School for the Blind, KSB held an onsite sporting event on March 11th and 12th. Students from KSB and the Illinois School for the Blind and Missouri School for the Blind participated in a goal ball tournament. I don't know what that is, but it sounds exciting. Goal ball is, oh, it tells me right here. Goal ball is a sport that was developed for individuals who are blind or visually impaired. KSB won five out-of-date matches while staff, alumni and students watched and cheered on the teams of KSB. Six KSB students recently participated in the National Braille Challenge sponsored by the Braille Institute of America. Competition consisted of proving, spelling, speed and accuracy and reading comprehension exercises in braille. The state champions were announced in a virtual celebration on March 24th. Kenan Herr in the sixth grade placed first in the freshman level, Addison Clark in the fifth grade placed first in sophomore level, and Haley Hittner also in the fifth grade placed third in the sophomore level. Elementary, third, fourth and fifth grade students went on their first field trip in two years from KSB. The group, along with teachers and the orientation and mobility specialists, rode the dark west to the Kentucky Center for Performing Arts for a performance of the Louisville Orchestra and other Louisville artists. Students all received instruction by the orientation specialist. artists. Students all received instruction by the orientation and mobility specialists on bus travel prior to the event. And the bill of roeby, track, and field games for elementary students took place on April 13th. Students from Jefferson County Public Schools, visually impaired preschool services in Indiana School for the Blind, Tennessee School for the Blind, and the Ohio School for the Blind participated. Shifting to KSD. KSD, the academic team there made it to the nationals in Washington, D.C. The finals will occur in May, 20th and 21st in Washington. While KSD made it to the regionals in the passage, the first time the team qualified for the national deaf academic bowl. The KSD chess team is participating in a nationwide virtual chess tournament for schools of the deaf during March and April. Coaches Stu Harper and Dr. Lee Rohr led five players, Alex Fox, Margaret Tucker, Cameron McPherson, Kylie Barfield, and Wilumba Usulka participated. One of the middle school classes is taking on an exciting mission, learning how to use swivel cameras to monitor and evaluate their engagement and communication during instruction in their English class. They will be assessing if they're following KSD's pride, stayed on task, and communicating clearly in American Sign Language. Students Savannah Brock, Matthew Culbert, and Madison Atkins are leading the way for the cameras to use at KSD. And KSD plans to use these cameras for the staff next year as a self-evaluation tool. Two KSD teachers were nominated for the Kentucky Teacher of the Year, Ms. Kenny Curtis, High School English and Language Arts teacher, and Ms. Caitlin Buckley, Middle School English and Writing teacher. KSD is proud of this teacher and showing KSD excellence in action. Madam Chair, I would also report that we, I think at this point I've gotten pool filled in there awaiting your cannonballing to break any of the pool. So we'll ensure we have a filter there for that. Madam Chair, that concludes my summary remarks and the pool important for the board. I'm happy to entertain any questions when they're ready. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. We were able to see the pool when we went to KSD back in December or so. And I'm really looking forward to an event with the State Board of Education that involves swimsuits. Thank you for that. Excellent. What question was my unit for Dr. Glass? All right. Excellent. Thank you so much. And I think we just got word that we have the dates for graduation for KSD and KSB. So I'll ask Meredith to send those around too. We'd love to have you join us for those two graduation ceremonies if you are able. So thank you. Excellent. The next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. And as always, the, our team from the department has identified these items as those that are typically non-controversial or routine in nature. As a reminder, this item, which requires a vote, consists of the consent agenda and allows for approval of all of these individual items in one action. You receive the consent agenda in advance and have a chance to look at these. At this time, though, you always have the opportunity to remove an item from consent if you would like to pull it for further discussion. Do we have a request from any member to remove a consent item? All right. Since none are to be moved, I would ask the board to entertain a motion to approve all items on the consent agenda. And before I call for that motion, I would like to add for the record that Dr. Poe has joined us. He's working into a very busy day today. Dr. Poe, welcome.
Thank you, and sorry for the lighting. I'm trying to fix it. So if you see things there, that's what I'm trying to do.
Very cool. Yeah. So, excellent. Thank you so much. So do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion. We approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Bowden. Do we have a second?
Mr. Turnbull, second.
Thank you, Mr. Turnbull. On that motion and second, do we have any further discussion? Here you go. All those in favor of approval of consent, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
And thank you, Dr. Poe. All opposed? No. Motion carries. Thank you. Typically, the next item on our agenda would be public comment. As always, we put out a call for public comment via email as a late. The board only reviews information and feedback about matters listed on the agenda, as you know. But for this meeting, we did not receive any public comment. For those of you who may be viewing today, please note that the KDE does always appreciate the opportunity to hear from constituents, and we look forward to offering in-person public comment for our meeting in June. The use of email for public comment was, of course, an expediency due to the limited engagement around the pandemic. So we will be opening back up in June. At this time, we're going to have some dessert before lunch and talk about the STLP championship event. And I would invite KDE Associate Commissioner Dana Couch and KDE Chief Digital Officer Marty Park to provide us with an overview about what's happening right over next door.
Well, this is my favorite workday of the year.
And that is one day that's made that.
This is my favorite time.
Too much legs.
You know, it's been historic to actually walk in and see this happen. We gave me chills because it's been years of making, of trying to make this happen. Of course, the pandemic related. And just watching the evolution of the board, we were the first to actually webcast over the internet in board meetings. And we made that so people didn't have to drive all in from different parts of the state and I'm just making a copy of that. And then I can remember when the board actually moved to a paperless electronic environment, which was a pretty big step because it used to be a huge book that was in the whole process of building that to put in place. And now to see this happen, you know, this is the very first time that I'm wearing in the United States that you've had at board meetings at an event like this. And so it's been, it is great joy that you all are here and with us today. I'll share a couple of parts too, and just, and I'll share some of these with the kids in our opening for the board ceremony. This is the largest event that's held here at the Lexington Center so far. We've used almost every spot it has. And so there'll be others that will be the first to ever fill that up. So that's pretty cool. And so just a few weeks ago, the Boys and Girls State Basketball Tournament was here. And one of the reasons we have it here, we want to say this is just as important as those types of events. And we're investing, investing in your, in your future, which is fun. It's, you know, this is, you know, always will say Kentucky, and it's true, is the pioneer, national leader of most aspects of education technology. And we actually have the largest and I think the best STLP program in the United States. And so we tell our kids, if you're the best Kentucky, you're really one of the best in the nation, which is, which we found is true. This is the 28th year of STLP, and this is the 15th year we've actually had a state championship in place. You'll see that the projects are focused on helping their fellow students, their fellow teachers, their school, and their community. I mean, this is project-based learning in action. And it's great for future teachers to kind of watch it and then see it. So when we go have events at the universities, we always encourage the College of Education to come and watch our events so they, because they see a lot, they see their students first of all age groups. But they see project-based learning that's in action. Our STLP program has 60,000 students. 8,000 of them are here today. They've made it through the regional competitions, and we have 2,000 adults. Most of those volunteers or mainly a volunteer organization. We really have a staff person one that helps make this happen. So it does count like a lot of good things for kids of, of volunteers to be in place. This is the first time we've been able to have an in-person event since our regionals, our nine regionals at university campuses and community centers in December of 2019. So this is special for that. We've been having those virtually, but it's great to have that. And always will be a virtual part of that, I think, going forward. This started with 2,000 team and individual entries at least. And then through the course of today, we'll identify 61 of our final projects, and then we'll go through the top 20, and then we'll do an Elite Eight, and then we'll do the final four. Those final four are state champions, that are state champion elementary, middle school, and high school. And then we have one for our overall state champion in this pure technical area. And as you go to the project center, you'll see the banners that our state champion will be taking back with them, along with the cookie having place. We also fund that our state champions go to the International Society for Technology and Education Conference in New Orleans. And so it's a big event. And when you see them, you see their growth as state champions when we actually see them to that finish line of the event. The KT will be broadcasting this online. The award ceremony, they have two of them. We have one-on-one, and then we have one maybe for projects at 5:00. They'll be doing that online. It'll also be on a TV broadcast starting at 5:00 tonight that we'll have that in place. And so we, we always want to take our chance to thank all the, all the folks that are volunteering their time in order to make this happen. A lot of folks in the Kentucky Department of Education are here today, volunteering their time. We have university folks. We have state agency folks. We have vendor folks. They're, they're volunteering their time to be judges and help manage with the buses out there. And we have over 300 buses that are part of coming today. And so it's a big event. And you probably haven't seen it, but as they left the bus, we had a red carpet for them as they came in.
I'll do this. So thank you so much for being here. I do want to call out with, and it was mentioned, David's fashion-forward time. It is very colorful, but what you'll notice, and you'll see students all throughout the day have these badges around, around the neck tied to their name. So these are the concept areas that are embedded and really guide through our Kentucky academic standards for technology. So huge shout out to Mickey Ray and her team for helping us get those standards established. These are, these are the things that students should know and be able to do in terms of using technologies to learn and learning through technologies. And that's what we're all about. We're not, we're not about blinky lights and technologies for technology's sake. It's about the learning. And that's what you'll see throughout the day. You'll see innovative designer. So David has earned already. He's a global collaborator. He's an empowered learner. He's a knowledge instructor. He's a creative communicator. We all know that. He's an innovative designer and a computational thinker. And so our students are demonstrating, and these are actually tied directly to one of our minimum graduation requirements, for demonstration of learning, project-based learning through technology. So we're really excited about that. The more we talk, the longer it is that you will not get to be with students. So we're going to wrap up.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you. Just hyping what we're already very excited about. And so at this time, we will be recessing so that board members can participate in tour of the STLP competition in action. We were originally going to be back for committees at 11:15. I think we're probably pretty close to make it back by then. So we will be recessing. Megan, if you want to go ahead and handle that, and then. All right. Thank you so much. We are reconvening after a brief, unfortunately, brief tour of the STLP championship and our committee meetings. First, I just, just a moment of privilege about what a great experience it was to be out there with those 8,000 kiddos. I think Dr. Todd talked to all of them. Turn it over to Chair Bloodworth.
Thank you. The committee approved the creation of a subcommittee to support the development of a state-level portrait of a liberal graduate. The subcommittee will include any KDE members who are interested in participating, as well as other education partners, including a post-secondary faculty member, a student from the Kentucky Student Voice team, and representatives from the Kentucky Coalition for Advancing Education. On behalf of the Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Committee, I also want to thank the team from the Office of Continuous Improvement and support for their presentation on the inclusive learner experience.
Excellent. Yay. So action was taken on the formation of the committee. All right. Excellent. Thank you so much. And thanks to the team, Dr. Poe included, for the Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Committee. No further action on our part. Thank you. And the next item, then I'll turn it over to Chair Todd for the Operations Committee report.
Hey, I'm asking the Operations Management Committee to approve of the Kentucky Minimum Specifications for school buses. And, sir, do you hear that again? I'm asking the Operations and Management Committee to approve of the Kentucky Minimum Specifications for school buses. And we had a great meeting. I think I saw the lady here who's.
Alista.
She stepped down. But if you went through the notes, you saw the redlining of the previous documents, and now they've got changed, but it's also good. And I'd like to ask for a vote by the full board since our committee passed it.
All right. So that motion comes out of committee, therefore does not require a second. So Dr. Todd, if you want to call for the action?
Call for a vote on this, the documents, and now they've got changed, but the specification document.
All those in favor, respond by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, no?
We had four similar waivers. And I'm asking our committee, I'm going to approve of the first, which was the Strick County School District. It mostly was in process for the change in the legislation that we'll hear more about later today. Thousand views in restricted funds for some of the things that are not priority, one, two, three, or four. But the committee heard from the superintendent, and we agreed with that. And so the motion comes from our committee, and we ask for a vote in the full board.
Thank you. So again, it requires no second. So motion for approval of the waiver for district county schools to use of restricted funds. All those in favor, respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion carries.
We had another approval of the waiver for Mercer County. Again, the superintendent spoke about that condition and some issues that they're trying to face and to bring up to speed on behalf of the funds that have available to them to use. So I ask for a motion of the full board based on the recommendation of our committee to pass this waiver as well.
Excellent. Thank you. All those in favor of approval of the Mercer County waiver for use of restricted funds, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion carries.
The third waiver was a move of approval for the Scott County School District related again to 702 KAR 40180. It's a waiver of being able to use funds for some of the multi-athletic facilities that you need to have. They're building a new school there, and they've got the room to do that with their budget. But we need to approve that waiver as well. So Captain Markley, I urge you to approve that.
Excellent. Thank you. And just a reminder for those of you who are viewing, viewing us today is that all of these, this information is in the board report. So you guys have had access to that as well. All those in favor of approving this waiver, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no?
The final one was for Buller County. And we really appreciate the superintendent's use of his peers trying to explain their situation. They've taken through their local force and have made this recommendation of the waiver. This requirement, and so Captain Markley, we have a vote, and we ask for a board approval.
All right. Thank you. And on one final waiver, all those in favor of approving the waiver request, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no?
That included our action items.
Excellent. Many thanks to Chair Todd and the Operations Committee as well. Now, the next item on our agenda is the presentation of the 2022 Robinson Award for Diversity and Equity in Public Education.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And just before that, I will just remark what a delight it was to tour the STLP exhibits and see the work that the students were doing. Soliana mentioned that she enjoyed, and I hesitate to report on the behavior of some of your board members, Madam Chair, but she did say that Dr. Todd went full engineer.
Anybody, yes, anybody, just be surprised by that.
Without any further ado, Dr. Samuel Robinson was a former member of the Kentucky Board of Education from 1991 to 2004, who made diversity and equity in public education his life's work. A noted educator and civil rights leader, Robinson began his career in Kentucky and Louisville in 1960. His diverse background in public education included everything from principal at Shawnee High School to president of the Lincoln Foundation. Robinson was also a well-known community figure as Louisville navigated the civil rights era. Each year, KDE grants this award to a Kentuckian or a Kentucky organization demonstrating extraordinary efforts and contributions in the area of educational diversity and equity. The criteria for receiving this award includes, but is not limited to, successful efforts in closing socioeconomic and/or racial achievement gaps and significantly improving student learning, student achievement, and other measured outcomes among students of color or economically disadvantaged students. At this time, it is my honor to announce the winner of the 2022 Robinson Award for Diversity and Equity in Public Education, Dr. Jason Reeves. And here are some things that you should know about Dr. Reeves. Over the past 18 years, Dr. Reeves has promoted equity and opportunities to learn at high levels for Kentucky students as a member of the P-16 community and as a continuously engaged community member. While examples and evidence are numerous to support this statement, there are three that stand out for reasons of reach, impact, and understanding of Dr. Reeves' longstanding commitment to Kentucky students. Currently in this role as a school board member for Barbaraville Independent, Dr. Reeves has championed equality for students through support of financial initiatives aimed at.
for this extreme honor. Looking at the past recipients of this award, I'm certainly in a very good company and very unful to be in that company as well. Most importantly, I would like to say it's been an honor and a true privilege to be a part of the P-16 education community for these years. Most importantly, it's been a personal honor to advance the cause of access for all P-12 learners. I have a lot of folks with me, behind me here, that have certainly given me opportunities and continue to give me opportunities to be a part of this work, and I am certainly looking forward to many more years of being a part of advancing education for all learners. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Reeves. You have this lovely award that will, I'll carry over to you.
Okay. Photo?
Oh, I don't want to.
Could you just want to join the collection? Committee representative. Congratulations again, Dr. Reeves. Our very deserving winner. On behalf of the Kentucky Board of Education and the staff at the Department of Ed, I want to personally thank you for your outstanding contributions. At this time, I think we will recess for lunch. Pretty close to the right time. Good for us. So, nope. Yes. 12:15. We will, Megan, we will return to reconvene at 12:45. All right. Welcome back, everyone. Thank you so much for everyone who made arrangements for our lunch today. The next item, as we move into action and discussion, is an amendment to 702 KAR 1:140, Student Records and Hearing Procedures. And so I'll ask, Todd, please, go ahead and give us the background on this motion.
Thank you, Chair Young. You're correct, we have a few proposed amendments to the Regulation 702 KAR 1140 regarding student records. But I have a member of my team, Felicia Newman, thank, on the teens, oh yes, Felicia's there. And she's done a heavy lifting on this, so I'm going to turn it over to her to present it to the board.
Good morning. My name is Felicia Newman, and I am a staff attorney with KDE and.
702 KAR 1140 regarding student records. But I have a member of my team, Felicia Newman.
Okay, great.
Thank, on the teens, oh yes, Felicia's there.
Thanks.
And she's done a heavy lifting.
Amendment to a particular regulation that was called to our attention by a school district. The amendment that we're asking the board to approve is 702 KAR 1:140, and that regulation deals with the request of a parent or an eligible student to modify the student's educational record. Now, an eligible student is a student who's enrolled in high school but has reached the age of majority or 18 years old. So when a parent or eligible student asks for this request for their educational record to be modified, there are two possible outcomes. Number one, all the parties involved can agree that the educational record needs to be modified, and they do it by agreement, and that becomes a part of the student's educational record. The second outcome could be the school district or the school objects to this modification, and that triggers the second part, or the next part of the regulation, which is a hearing. Now, the hearing procedures are listed within the regulation, and that's what prompted the school district, particular school districts, to call the department. Now, we received that call, and the district raised the issue that the language in the regulation regarding who oversees the hearing was a bit confusing. After we reviewed the regulation, we agreed that it was confusing, and so we decided that we needed to take action. Now, the specific question from the district, like I said, was who oversees the hearing. And currently, the language says, obviously before amendment, says, "A hearing officer who is a disinterested party and is a certified official of the district appointed by the superintendent." The question remained, what it, who the certified person was. Did the certified person, was that an employee who was certified by EPSB or the Educational Professional Standards Board, or was that a certified hearing officer from the Attorney General? And as the board knows, the Attorney General sometimes appoints hearing officers in administrative hearings. So we felt that was confusing. So we conducted a thorough review of the law, the Kentucky statute, and the federal law, and after that review of FERPA, which is obviously the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act, that the person who oversees the hearing does not have to be certified by EPSB. And so it is whoever the superintendent wants to appoint. And so we amended the regulation to align with FERPA, and we modified that confusing language. And then we also took the opportunity, because we needed to amend it, to go through the regulation, I'm sorry, and make it more comport with the Kentucky statute, with FERPA. We cleaned up some of the language, so it was consistent throughout, and made it an overall better regulation that comports with federal law. And if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer. Hope I didn't go too fast.
Excellent. Thank you. What questions might we have? All right. Hearing none. Thank you so much. At this point, I would ask the board to entertain a motion to approve amendments to 702 KAR 1:140, Student Records, Hearing Procedures. We have such a motion. And Chair, I'll send you. Thank you, Ms. Adams. Do we have a second?
I have a second.
Thank you, Dr. Todd. On a motion, a second, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please respond by saying aye. Opposed, no. Thank you, Dr. Poe. I was able to see your thumbs up there. Thank you. And again, Todd, thanks to you and your team. Now, we will turn our attention to review items, and we are delighted to invite up the team from Division of Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging. We had to postpone them from our last meeting, and so today, we just want to spend time with the team and an update from Kentucky Department of Ed Deputy Commissioner Thomas Woods Tucker. And I will give you a chance to introduce your whole team and take it from there.
Thank you, Board. Chair Young.
Thank you, Board. Chair Young, members of the Kentucky Board of Education, Commissioner Glass, and all our colleagues and guests here today. We're going to start with our presentation will start with the quick learning targets. And as we sit here, Chair Young, we have two new members who are part of Division of Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging that we're about to introduce. So a couple of quick learning targets here. First, we're going to revisit the meaning of diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging. And it's our pleasure to update Kentucky Board of Education and our folks who are listening regarding the new resources, strategies, and guidance from the Kentucky Department of Education, Division of Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging. So before we get started, it's my pleasure to introduce three of our new colleagues. Our first colleague is not here today, but it's Mrs. Heather Bushman. She is the program coordinator of our comprehensive school, program counselor, this position that Dr. Sweeney previously filled at, in fact, Heather's out working with counselors today, doing a great job since she's been here. But we do have in-person Dr. Lawrence Chang, who's our strategic analyst. Thank you for joining us. And Dr. Nicole Fields, community engagement coordinator. Let's get them round the box. Just briefly here, Dr. Chang is really helping us to look at our work in a very strategic and analytical and compassionate way as well to improve learning here. And it's one of the things that we definitely wanted to do, to support the work of the board's strategic plan and the work that Dr. Glass is doing here. And Dr. Fields is really filling a very important role in this community engagement. And we were fortunate to have funds to take care of these two positions of course, but one of the big questions always is, how do we engage the community? How do we build capacity for this work to continue in the years to come? So again, we're happy to have those two very important individuals coming to us.
The work will connect to the United We Learn report very heavily, so we're excited about that connection as well.
Okay. And again, we are being strategic in this work as we look at the umbrella of United We Learn and looking at the strategic initiatives and objectives of United We Learn. You'll hear that mentioned quite a bit during our presentation here. Okay, so let's go on to the next slide. Diversity, we're going to revisit this, and it's so important that the Kentucky Board of Education and the agency has taken this very broad definition of diversity. Please allow me to delve here. Again, recognizing individual differences, personality, learning styles, and life experiences, and group and social differences, such as race or ethnicity, socioeconomic status, class, gender, sexual orientation, gender identity, country of origin, different abilities, as well as cultural, political, religious, or other affiliations that can be engaged in the service of learning. Many times, when we think about diversity, and still today, it's kind of sad, we are thinking, to many roles, when we think about diversity, we think about skin color, and it's way, way beyond that. And it is so important to think beyond that when we look at states across the country that are really, it's difficult for us to talk about some of these important topics that will hopefully get us to the important term of belonging. Next slide. So one of the things that we do when we are working with the board, working within the agency, we have a set of four questions. One of the four questions we have today is, in what place do we celebrate diversity in our school districts, our state of schools and at KDE? And real quickly, I want to give you three examples, one being the Kentucky Department of Education's internal diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging team. We have that team right in the agency to lean on and have these great discussions. I had the privilege earlier of speaking with Greta Helton regarding a situation where we're exploring these topics, and we've had some great outside experts to talk with us about these terms. But it really hits home when we have people in the agency who can relate that to the work that we're doing and can relate to each other. And so it's great to see that taking place here within our agency and we're building that trust factor. Then also collaborate with district DEIB coordinators and officers. As you know, we've hired nine DEIB coordinators across the state, and you'll take a look at those here shortly. And again, building that overall network, and nine regional DEIB coordinators. Next slide. And if you take a look, magnificent slide here, it shows folks who are here in KDE, as well as our coordinators representing the non-regional co-ops. What we will see added when we see this slide again, there are approximately 15 DEIB folks who are employed in respective districts of the 170 school districts across the Commonwealth. So again, we're constantly growing this community of learners, this community of leaders to help really alleviate some of these opportunity gaps that students have experienced and staff have experienced as well. And again, here's a list of some of our folks representing these regional forums. Now, let's move to equity. Let's visit equity. Again, equity in education is fundamentally an effort to ensure that all of our students have the supports they need to meet our academic status and to reach their full potential as students, citizens of U.S.A. And every focus in education recognizes that public school students come to us with a variety of backgrounds and experiences, needs, supports, and so forth, and that we must take those into account. We consider the education of each child, and that's from our very own Commissioner Glass, one of the most comprehensive definitions of equity that we have. So again, Dr. Glass, that's what we're trying to do. So moving on down to our fourth question, too. What are some examples of how districts and schools can notice, and even at KDE, are providing equitable access to stakeholders? One huge example is that we have reduced AP international scholarships fees for students across the Commonwealth. Again, we'll thank Dr. Glass's folks for doing that. Dr. Sweeney was about $10.
So no student in Kentucky will pay more than $10 for an advanced placement exam. So we understand that there are huge and difficult effects from the pandemic, and many of those effects come financially for our families, and to be able to support them in this way is, it's just, it's really, it's a blessing for us to be able to support that work. And then, as Dr. Woods Tucker said, our international scholarships. So no student that receives free or reduced much will pay anything for an advanced placement or international scholarships exam this year.
Again, examples of providing equitable access to all of our students. And I definitely want to spend a few seconds here highlighting the Governor's Scholars Program. As you know, it's one of the marquee programs for students across the Commonwealth, and under Dr. Glass's leadership, we were able to add 13 more slots to that program. And it's going to be with an emphasis on ensuring that you have greater representation from students from lower economic, and I hate to say this, but lower economic status, as well as students with ethnic, greater ethnic backgrounds. So 30 additional slots is going to mean quite a bit. Right now, we'll probably have at least 10 to 12, somewhere in the neighborhood, students, and some of these students will straddle both groups, from students who are receiving free or reduced price lunches, eight to 20 more African-American students, and seven to eight additional Hispanic students. So really excited about increasing the diversity of our participants in the Governor's Scholars Program. And then out of our office, and like David, like after us, adding a campus coming up for the Governor's School of Arts, which I've briefed about.
Yeah, so who loves the arts? And that's wrong. All right. Whether it's music, whether it's visual arts, whether it's writing, whether it's poetry or performing arts, this is a universal language, and we know that more and more of our Kentucky student, our students from Kentucky need access to the arts. I had the pleasure of being a school counselor at the Governor's School for the Arts for three summers, and as an adult, it was a life-changing experience. So imagine what it was like for our high schoolers that got to be on a college campus and stay there for three weeks for the first time in their lives they were leaving their homes and their communities to come and be in this immersive experience, arts experience for three weeks. So we are blessed and excited to be able to provide 256 more slots for GSA, and for the very first time in Kentucky, a second campus that will be held at University of Kentucky.
And then just look at inclusion. Next slide. The intentional act of creating and. under Dr. Glass's leadership, we were able to add 13 more slots to that program. And it's going to be with an emphasis on ensuring that you have greater representation from students from lower economic, and I hate to say this, but lower economic status, as well as students with ethnic, greater ethnic backgrounds. So 30 additional slots is going to mean quite a bit. Right now, we'll probably have at least 10 to 12, somewhere in the neighborhood, students, and some of these students will straddle both groups, from students who are receiving free or used price lunches, eight to 20 more African-American students, and seven to eight additional Hispanic students. So really excited about increasing the diversity of our participants in the Governor's Scholars Program. And then out of our office, David, who helped us, added a campus coming up for the Governor's School of Arts, which I've briefly done.
Yeah, so who loves the arts in this room? All right, whether it's music, whether it's visual arts, whether it's writing, whether it's poetry or performing arts, this is a universal language, and we know that more and more of our Kentucky student, our students from Kentucky need access to the arts. I had the pleasure of being a school counselor at the Governor's School for the Arts for three summers, and as an adult, it was a life-changing experience. So imagine what it was like for our high schoolers that got to be on a college campus and stay there for three weeks for the first time in their lives, they were leaving their homes and their communities to come and be in this immersive experience, arts experience for three weeks. So we are blessed and excited to be able to provide 256 more slots for GSA, and for the very first time in Kentucky, a second campus that will be held at University of Kentucky.
And then just look at inclusion. The intentional act of creating an environment that fosters, that sounds sort of like you know over here. Again, intentional act of creating an environment that fosters mutual respectful relationships in which each student, regardless of his or her intellectual, social, cultural, and geographic background, is welcomed, supported, and valued as fully participating members of society.
So we were, we were in this Commissioner and Student Advisory Council, and one of the activities that we did was we had our students reinvent a school, and we asked them to reinvent the most innovative school in Kentucky, and we said, what are some characteristics that we would seek? And during that conversation, Dr. Glass chimed in because our students continuously talked about inclusion, and he chimed in with this. He said, I go to this concept of radical inclusion. And that was the first time I'd really heard this term. Said, meaning that we go out of our way to identify individuals and groups who are typically outside our conversations and decision-making processes and create supports and intentional structures to involve them. So we asked you this, what are some examples? And you all, this is, we're not the sage on the stage, so feel free to, to respond. But what are some examples of how our schools and districts in K D E support inclusion? So what would you say to that? What are some examples that you see? As you're thinking of those, I'll, I'll let you know a few examples that I've, oh, go ahead.
Well, today I noticed that the presence, abundant presence of female students caught my attention, and it's like, okay, so we are not struggling with this issue of girls in STEM and girls in math and girls in technology, if that is any evidence. And I, I just, I mentioned that because it was just a notable example of inclusion that I noticed, and it just, it made me, it was very gratifying to see.
That's awesome. That's a great example. Thank you. Are there others? Our team was at the Kentucky School for the DAF on Monday, and we had this great, this great presentation with their staff, with all of their staff members, and one of their staff members, we asked this question, and he said, we have, we have a swing set, and we make sure that that swing set will work for anybody in a wheelchair, because we don't want our students with disabilities or our students in wheelchairs to feel like they can't have as much fun or they can't participate in activities when their peers are. Right? To us, that is another example of inclusion. Our commissioner has a brown bag lunch series monthly to make sure that the employees at K D E feel like they are included and that they have a voice. We have the Commissioner and Student Advisory Council that meets monthly to make sure that our students feel like they have a voice. And then our team K D E monthly meetings are also happening. These are all examples of inclusion. And furthermore, our team is working with all offices at the Kentucky Department of Education and all regional co-op staff to have book studies, and these book studies will be all about diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging. And it will be different, they will be differentiated and personalized towards the needs of these offices as well. So all of these are examples of inclusion, and our, our division, along with the Kentucky Department of Education, seeks to create more examples of this in the future.
And making mention again of our Student Advisory Council, we've talked about how extraordinary they are, they are, we have the board member, something outstanding, and we want to really understand what's happening in school districts and how students are feeling. I asked us, and I asked our lawmakers and, and our citizens in the Commonwealth to tune in, listen to our students, and we want some great advice and suggestions how to increase diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging, listen to our students. And I was just on the way in 2020 when I came to the agency to really hear thoughts and feelings of our students. Next slide please.
Yes, sir. I just wanted to raise up the L3 communities, those cohorts, and the work that they're doing around this inclusion and how in the United We Learn report, one of the foundational requests that emerged from that was this notion of designing good communities and co-creation. And so we see that happening with the L3 districts, how they're intentionally reaching out to students, people in communities, as they design new assessment accountability and learning experiences for students, individuals who haven't always been at the table when decisions were made. So there's an intentional effort to do that in the L3 communities, and it tracks back to what our Kentuckians told us they wanted for the future of education. They wanted to belong and be involved in those kinds of decisions.
Yeah, I love that. You bring up something that Sarah Snipes and David Cook's team is doing, and one of the things that's always stood out to me that they do is they have this example of Condeles families, and they say that, you know, your school has Condeles families and students that belong to it. How many Condeles families are at the table, the decision-making table? You know, so they're intentionally pulling out these underrepresented groups and saying, I love this quote, there's this quote that says, if it's about us, without us, it's not for us. And so if we have these families and these students, and they're part of our school community, and then we have to make sure that we're elevating their voices and ensuring that they do feel included. So great points.
And so ultimately, when we look at diversity, equity, inclusion, we want to arrive at belonging, and that simply means the degree through which learners believe, that's all of us, and feel and experience that we are accepted and we're respected by adults and each other, our peers, and as a valued contributor in our learning and social environment. Dr. Sweeney just gave an example at K S D, the swing set. We've heard many examples across the Commonwealth and in other states where high school students are inviting students who are maybe somewhat different or have special learning abilities or some unique abilities, they're inviting them to some of the cultural traditions in high school, like homecoming prom and dance and so forth. And then one of the things we really like celebrating are cultural fairs, which students share dishes, they share custom. And also, we talked about the work of L3, as Dr. Glass mentioned, our division will continue to work with all, all agents, all departments in the agency in terms of elevating student and teacher force. And that's the biggest thing I can say about the United We Learn and the work of the L3s. It's about elevating both student and teacher force, and we can see this being carried out here with Allison Soliano and in the next group of teacher and student representatives. So again, it's being modeled from the board, modeled from the classroom. Next slide. Next, we'll talk a little bit about our Kentucky Equity Group. It really is about updating you on that. Again, we, our folks in the standards area, and I think you're still here, as you know, we're giving a stark work on our science standards, and so we're excited here in Kentucky to get, how they set up clear, understandable standards, as they discuss what students should know, what should be able to do. We really believe that is a foundation, a foundational aspect of equity here in the Commonwealth, because this is something that every student in the Commonwealth, regardless of the school district, should have a firm understanding of the standards. Again, we're in full swing with our high-quality instructional resources. Certainly want to thank, again, Mickey Ray and people in our standards department in helping us ensure, and of course, our friends with C C S S O, again, providing initial funding for us to ensure that students here in the Commonwealth have access to high-quality instructional standards, resources, and materials. And you'll hear a little bit more about the A4 modules when we talk about celebrations. And then our Equity Playbook, that's going to be a great complement to our Equity Dashboard that, with us, David, to talk a little bit about the second, because it's one thing to look at these opportunity gaps versus having some real sustainable and actionable things to do to address these opportunity gaps. So we're very excited that we're in the last phase of getting this Equity Playbook approved. Then also, our professional learning communities, which are huge, as I mentioned earlier, the D E I, professional learning communities that we have here. And then you heard quite a bit about K and the huge difference that it's making, but all of this is intertwined with our multi-tiered system of schools.
So I used to work at an at-promise school. My at-promise school saw tremendous amounts of poverty, tremendous amounts of trauma as well. And one of the things that we struggled with was mining the data. You've probably heard this, this phrase, data rich but insights poor. And we had so much data, but it was in so many different locations that it was hard to kind of put that whole puzzle together. There were so many pieces of the puzzle, and it was really hard for us to put the whole puzzle together. So we had this vision of putting a dashboard together in Kentucky, and this dashboard would quickly help school leaders and school teams create insights about what's actually happening at their school. And with this dashboard, we wanted to have one location where people could go to, to begin the conversation instead of having to look at multiple platforms. So we created this Equity Dashboard. Take a look at this. This is real data in Kentucky, right? So today is April 20th, 2022. If I signed on this morning, I would have seen data as of this morning. Okay, so it's real data. You can see these orange dots represent at-risk or at-promise populations. All right, so I'm quickly seeing in this slide here, I'm quickly taking a look at in-school suspension. And with in-school suspension, I can already see that I've got different populations that are considered at-risk. So if I'm a, if I'm a school leader, then I'm starting to ask myself questions, and I'm starting to ask my team questions. We see that there are these populations that are at-risk. What are the root causes to this risk? Okay? And when we begin to have conversations about what potentially these root causes can be, then we're going to start to have more and more insights as to how we can support or fix these inequities. Take a look at this one. I know we wish that the screen was bigger, but if you saw, if you, if you had a closer look at this, this is academic proficiency. If you had a closer look at this, you would see that those orange dots lie heavily with our minoritized youth. Okay, so we're seeing our minoritized, our minoritized youth creating at-risk, they have, sorry, their, their performance is at-risk compared to their non-minoritized youth peers. All right, so as a school leader or district leader, if I'm looking at this, I'm automatically saying, these are the sub-populations that I need to focus on, and then we need to create root cause analysis as, and figure out why these things are happening, how we can support ways to fix them.
And Daniel, I want to make mention a couple of things that are extremely important. Kentucky is one of the first states to have this data in real time. And many of you have been in classrooms, you've had leadership roles as classroom teachers, principals, assistant principals, and superintendents, and one of the things we would always say, criticize our educational system is not working with real-time data. Thanks to the foresight of Kentucky for having one student information system, infinite campus, your school leaders, your teachers, even down to the classroom, can pull this data and look at this data in, in real time as opposed to looking at post hoc data and said, well, last year, Thomas Tucker was suspended quite a bit or was not really being pushed academically. We can look now and change the trajectory of students' academic behavior in real time. That is huge. Also, the support and training, the personal learning that's involved, our D E I B coordinators, our non-regional coordinators are working with their regional co-ops and with school districts to ensure that people who have access to this data have the proper trainers, one, they have access, two, do you have the support to interpret the data and take action? So I'm extremely happy about that, and two newest colleagues we introduced, they'll help, they are helping with the training with this Equity Dashboard.
So let's talk about a multi-tiered system of supports. All right, and we're going to be brave with this, but I know that you've heard this term. But a multi-tiered system of supports drives everything that our division does. You've heard of tiers one, two, and three. So you know that tier one is going to be whole group teaching. You know that tier two is going to be a smaller group teaching, and then you know that tier three is really going to be for that 5% or so. Right? But how does that translate into this work? One thing that I, that has really helped me understand this M T S S is this one definition here. This really put things in perspective for me, and I hope it does the same for you. So K Y M T S S is a multi-level prevention system to support student achievement and behavioral competencies through an integration of differentiated core instruction, assessment, and intervention. So not only are we looking at academic achievement, but we're also looking at the social, emotional, and behavioral competencies of our students. It is first and foremost a framework that organizes the systems, data, and practices along a layer of continual support to build responsive, equitable, and inclusive learning experiences for each and every student. So we are blessed, we've got Cand Sellers, who's come to the Kentucky Department of Education. She is also in the Office of Teaching and Learning, and she has really led the work on Kentucky, on our Kentucky M T S S website as well. As we mentioned earlier, we know that elevating and prioritizing student voice is extremely important. All right, we have to prioritize the voices of students. It goes back to the quote I mentioned earlier, if it's about us, without us, it's not for us. So making sure that our students have a voice at the table, making sure that they are getting kind of that look behind the curtain so they can see what's going on, what's going on with the data, and then, and then offering solutions as to how we can take action to improve that data is always going to be important. We know that students don't come to us with a blank slate. They come to us with funds of knowledge, right? They've all got these wonderful and beautiful cultural backgrounds. They've got this background of knowledge, and one thing that we need to do a better job at in education is utilizing those funds of knowledge. We said earlier, we don't want to be the state on the stage. We want to make sure that you feel included in this conversation, and we want to do the same with our students. Right? We can learn with and from our students if we create the opportunities for them. We're so excited because we are, we're really prioritizing social, emotional learning. Our Lieutenant Governor, her work with our Commissioner and Student Advisory Council is impressive and exciting, and we know that mental health is something that we have to prioritize. So we have begun work on a Kentucky Framework of Best Practices for Social, Emotional Learning. There are several big rocks that we're looking at with this document, and we're bringing in different agencies like the Department for Behavioral Health, our Friskies, we've got our Richmond Cooperatives, we've got Eastern Kentucky University, and so many more partners. We're looking at big rocks like the whole child, climate and culture, diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging, early childhood, and workforce development and career in technical education. One of the things that I'm also excited to share is that literally the world leader on social, emotional learning comes to every meeting with us. Castle is at every meeting with us every single month to talk about this framework and to help us develop it. I feel like we need some snaps or something. So you've heard this term, trauma-informed practices, and Kentucky is doing a great job at ensuring that many of our educators are trauma-informed. Trauma-informed practices asks our educators to ask the question, what happened to you? So we shift from this question of what is wrong with you to what happened to you? Right? But we want to go a step further. There is this awesome docu-series on Netflix. I know nobody in here watches Netflix, right? But this series is called When They See Us. There's also a book about the Exonerated Five that is profiled in that, in that series, and this book is called Punching the Air. This is the quote that makes us understand that we've got to go a little bit beyond trauma-informed practices, and it says this, "Ever since that day in the fifth grade, my teachers watched me so hard and so close that I felt like I was trying to break out of prison. Every dumb thing I did, they thought it was because of trouble at home, an absent father, a tired mother, not enough books, not enough vegetables, not enough sleep." not enough books, not enough vegetables, not enough sleep. They believed those lies about me," and this is the important part, "and made themselves a whole other boy in their minds and replaced me with them." We don't need to replace our students. We need to understand our students. And furthermore, we need to show them that they have strength and the ability to become resilient. And so we want to shift not only, so let me take that back. We want to shift. In addition to trauma-informed practices, we also want to encourage a healing-centered engagement that asks the question, Cherry Allen, what's wrong with you? Dr. Glass, what's wrong with you? Sally Allen, what's wrong with you? Right, because when we know our strengths, we can feel like if an obstacle comes our way, we can overcome it.
And as we shift to storytelling, which is a huge motif with Kentucky Department of Education and is huge really in understanding different perspectives. Anytime it was in our profession in education, many of the initiatives we were undertaking that's put a better amount of students and staff, whether it's social, emotional learning or trying to develop a better understanding of trauma-informed practices, these terms become hijacked and call something that they're not, and I'm not against the three letters that some of the work we've done has been called. But at the heart of this, this is about capturing students, meeting students and meeting staff where they are and addressing the needs of each of our students regardless of their background, their religious or political background, regardless of their gender, just simply meets students where they are. Because we're at a point in our country now where we cannot afford to lose a single student. We cannot afford to lose a single student and we have a moral obligation and an educational obligation to reach all our students and staff. And I ask you all of us not to allow these best practices to be hijacked and called something that they're not. Danielle, storytelling.
All right, so we heard, I'm clear, that students want to talk about their mental health. One way of doing that is through storytelling. And this would be a tier-two intervention, if you're, you're thinking back to that NTSS we spoke about earlier. So the research says that we should be teaching our students to empathize and with, with and understand others, especially those whose lives are more difficult than their own. Incompetence in the social awareness domain involves having the critical historical grounding to take the perspective of those with the same and different backgrounds and cultures and appropriately empathizing, feel compassion. So we know, we can't ignore the fact that there's also race-based stress and trauma. And that's not only in Kentucky, but also in the country and in the world, right? One of the first stages to healing racial trauma is encouraging youth to engage in racial storytelling. I did this as a school counselor at Seneca. I did this through Pipcock Counseling and it was powerful. And for the first time, kids were saying, I thought I was the only one that went through something like that. Now I realize that other people have gone through it, right? Speaking of Pipcock Counseling, you're going to get a little taste of that here in a second. We're really excited to share. I told you the arts are important. Sharing their personal stories will help them to release negative emotions. And group studies, storytelling from personal experience has a positive impact on all participants. And amplifying, this is a theme today, amplifying these voices promotes personal resilience and fosters community connection. So creating these safe spaces for storytelling is going to be important. Now, it's important to understand this. Your story may not be the same or similar to my story. For example, we've all been here today. We've all heard the same presentations from the same people. We, we shared this experience, but you and I may have very different responses to the material that's been presented, right? And it's important to understand that we should value everybody's response to everything that they've heard, right? You can't discount one person's response versus somebody else. All right, so you're, so that, that's going to be important to know. So think of two children sitting in a, in a classroom. A delivery comes to the, to the door with flowers. Child A shows excitement. Their parent gifts flowers each year for joyous occasions like birthday, Valentine's Day, et cetera. But child B has only ever associated floral arrangements with funerals. The two children are in the same situation with two very different reactions and emotions based on their lived experience, right? So we have to honor and value those lived experiences and then talk about them. Again, this is part of being trauma-informed and healing-centered.
And as we look at storytelling holistically, one, they think, well, you talk about how we're different. No, it's not. It's really celebrate how we are alike, simply looking at that each of us has a different story. And we celebrate and we appreciate the differences. And that in turn shows how we are alike, that each of us has a story and we want to celebrate that.
So I'm going to ask you, how can we make space for our students to share their stories and lived experiences? And what would this do for our kids? I see Allison and it reminds me of a trip we made last month, I think, to Rowland County. And we, our team, it was our first, our team's first trip out there. And we had the privilege to walk into this classroom with a group of students that were, that were leaders in this school. And we didn't really know what we were walking into, but we said, we want to be available to you. And they brought up some difficult situations that they were trying to navigate. They were trying to figure out, how can we make sure that while we are a smaller rural community, we're appreciating the lived experience of our black students, our black peers? How can we find ways to do that, right? So even our kids are looking for ways to create safe spaces. Do you have any ideas or suggestions?
I will say that when I was in the classroom, that building community was the direct route to having a strong classroom and with good discipline within the classroom because the students got to know each other and we did it. That's like, it was storytelling time and we called it our community time. And it was, it was time to share. Five-year-olds do it, boy, do they share. I knew everything about everything, like, and then some. But during the course of that time, they truly became a community. And the level of empathy grew, the level of caring grew and we were on a world. So I'm sitting here thinking, what does it take to make that safe space? It takes opportunity and time.
And some of that, some of that time, some of that time that you take to build that community is actually going to give you more instructional time back because you're going to see reduced behavioral issues. So you're onto something. And by the way, I have a five-year-old and I have two six-year-olds and so I know exactly what you mean.
Their teachers know everything about this.
Yes, yes.
See, I want to add one thing to that over here. And there are others with no more details maybe than I do. There's this Advanced Kentucky Program that's in the system. And when I first heard about it, the key to getting that first grant from ExxonMobil was they were going to move the barriers. So any student that wanted to take an AP class could take AP class. And they, if you look at the Frigidares statistics and Minority statistics, they did very well. They have several teachers and that's, boy, it's great that these kids aren't even want to take a chance. They said, they don't want to take a chance. We have to recruit, we have to tell them that they can do this. And that their background academics that hold them back. But then the other thing that they did taught them that opportunities to, to tell stories and get together on weekends, they are taken to a simple location where they're taught by some of the best teachers in the areas they study. And just that bus time, car time together gives them a chance to meet no one else and mixes up too. So mixes the stories and experiences up as well. So I do think you're onto something, trying to look at what do you have where you can consciously increase the likelihood that you'll have a positive result for your children. And then once they see success in what they do, I know a young lady who got a five on her AP exam. She got scores she told her mother, that's not me, I can't do that. Yeah, it is you. Then she got a National American scholarship and she's worked with a lot of people around her now. And so I did think there's something that can happen. But you got to give them some out-of-classroom time, some longer time, some community time and some money. But you had that teacher, some in case to be the proactive partner in that relationship to get them to take that risk. And then though the teacher has the obligation to make them successful, which is a chance to see a teacher put more interest in than they might have otherwise.
Thank you, Dr. Tucker, for sharing that story. We hear stories across the country when we remove barriers to students' access to AP and AP courses. Because as teachers, we're afraid, oh my God, you know, these scores are going to drop if these students are not ready. But once we build that relationship with students, help build that confidence that you're talking about, our students will do well on those assessments, even if they're from historical groups that have not done well. It's about building that connection, sharing those stories and giving them those opportunities.
I'll just say, go ahead.
Another powerful tool we have is mentoring programs where adults come in and have a one-to-one relationship with students. I've been honored to be able to do that since I retired. And, and I also had taught the other family members of the students. So I, I knew the band pretty well and it was, you know, I could really see her open up and she just seemed lighter when she'd leave our sessions, like she was getting so much off her chest.
I love that. Thank you for sharing. Dr. Waszak actually told a story about him and a student named Anthony where he, he did that one-on-one mentoring, how much that impacted Anthony's life. I'll also say it's a much longer story, but because of Advanced Kentucky, Seneca went from 158 homogenous students at AP to open enrollment and there were later 630 students with more access. So you bring up a great point. Our work out of the Kentucky Department of Education for modeling and the interviews and we, we linked in some resources for that. I will just give you a big example of it. We were in a breakout room virtually and we were asked to discuss with our colleagues one question. And the question was this, what makes you feel seen and heard at work? That one question opened up my eyes and I would, I would submit to everybody's eyes in that breakout room as to who we were truly working with and how we can find better ways to work with them in the future. Another thing that we've been doing is we've been going out to McPracken County and working with students. And I want to give you just a quick taste of what our students do when we provide safe spaces for them. Again, we mentioned the arts. We asked them to write music based on what was going on in their lives. And this is a quick example of that. To really just express themselves as best in mental health. And one of the, one of the purposes of that song was just to remind educators, all we want you to do is acknowledge us and say, hey, when you see us, because we may be going through something that we need to discuss with you.
And before we, to some of our celebrations here, the visit to McPracken County and some of the other school districts, the team has been asked to come out and assist staff with, that's an example of taking music and working with students who are having some difficult challenges. And some of the cases, it's really racial and bringing these students together and composing music or creating music can really show how they are, they are like, how they go about addressing some of the problems in their schools. So certainly, Danielle, I want to thank you and Florence and Nicole for being invited out and helping those students examine some of the issues they have and really kind of the solutions they were, in this case, they were able to come to some solutions to the issue. A couple of celebrations here, I'll be very quick. Seen a signal from Meredith yet. Okay, five minutes, so go ahead. If we had time, we would show you our phenomenal website with all of the resources that are available for colleagues here in Kentucky. Also, we are continuing our work with the A4 modules, the council, post-secondary, higher ed and our folks in our pre-service teacher programs and folks that Dr. Donnell, folks that he worked with will have access to those modules. And our, actually our folks across the Commonwealth, including our regional co-ops. So we're excited about that work and we have a wonderful venue of professional learning opportunities that are open in, are open on our website and folks can access those as well.
One of the things that's beautiful about Kentucky and one of the things that really attracted me to KE under Dr. Amanda Ellis is she started, she was here for our transition to personalized graduation apartments. And she really championed that work. And that is something that to this day, I, I, I tell everybody, this makes me so proud of our state, right? We're connecting post-secondary goals of our students to actual classes that they take. So our, our, so Heather Bushelman is, she continues to be in charge of the Graduation Apartments along with the ILP, the Individual Learning Plan. And in that individual learning plan, we've got national recognition because we are providing our educators with free lessons that they can adopt or adapt based on their needs. And we take into consideration alignment to social emotional learning competencies with those lessons.
Okay, and I'll go ahead and wrap up here with a couple of things to do with Dr. Sweeney. If I miss anything, please jump in. Meredith says we have three minutes. I promise you folks are going to wrap up in three minutes. A couple of things here we're still working on and that's creating a community stakeholder advisory council on DEIB strategies and priorities. Again, working more closely with members in our community as part of our outreach, working with Kentucky Education Television on asynchronous safe space courses for all educators with Michael credentials, we've heard that term used quite a bit. Danielle, you want to talk three sentences on that course?
Yes, so we know that we've got a lot of students that are traditionally underrepresented and they did not feel seen and heard at, at school. And furthermore, we know that we've got educators that just simply don't know how to support our students that are traditionally at the margins. Think about our LGBTQIA+ students who may not, who may not have a preferred name. And do our students, do our employees, do our educators know how to use that preferred name? Or what should happen when a student says, I prefer to go by this gender identity versus that one? So this, well, and along with our, our students that have experienced race-based stress and trauma, right? How do you create safe spaces for kids that have experienced this so that they can't talk about these things? All right, so this, this course with Kentucky Education Television would help our educators understand how to create those safe spaces.
Okay, also we are, as I mentioned earlier, we're in the final stage of getting and launching our Equity Playbook to address some of the more common educational opportunity gaps in 70 or 170 districts have already signed up. Hope to end this in June. Some of those asynchronous modules will help us explore topics like resorted practices, fostering equity, people learning more. Additional, additionally, we will have student and staff set a podcast. That was an idea that came from our fabulous Commissioner Student Advisory Council. And Dr. Fields will be the host and we'll have students and staff helping us, you know, contribute to some of the ideas and discussions, highlighting some of the heroic and heroic stories and practices in our schools across the Commonwealth. And we're excited, excited to soon launch our monthly newsletter for stakeholders throughout Kentucky. And as we always say, diversity, equity and inclusion. Not a destination, it's a journey towards belonging. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you so much. It was well worth it. We really appreciate the deep dive into each of the letters in diversity, equity, inclusion and belonging. And love that we've added belonging to overtly express that desire on our part. So thank you so much. I, so many strands to follow, but one more time, the heavy emphasis on the importance of the focus on the learner, amplification of the voice of the student in the process while supporting teachers to meet their needs. So thank you and it's a pleasure to welcome the new team members. And this learning time is just delicious to me, so I appreciate it so much. At this point, the next review item is- At this point, the next review item is Associate Commissioner Darnell and his team on the Kentucky Impact Survey results. That one maybe has been a tricky one today. Try the next one over fire.
The one with the face sign.
There you go. Looks like a bad breath symbol, maybe.
When you get to bathrooms, and they look these weird, like you don't really know. Good afternoon, you all. Thank you for having a guest today and an opportunity for Panorama to just speak with you all. Thank you so much for your service. Just wanted to say, leaving my gratitude for you all and the work that you do to allow us to do the work that we're able to do. Also want to say, so Yana, I want to be like you when I grow up. Put it out there. It is a big pleasure learning from you and having you, your voice, and be involved again. So yeah, so when I grow up, I'm gonna be, that's my goal. Also want to share a little bit of love for the Division of Educator Recruitment, our DIRD team and development. We have certainly a wonderful crew that puts together most of this work, the behind-the-scenes work, and we have newly mentored Dr. Vida Stewart here as well. And soon, in the not-so-distant future, to be, Dr. To Be, Erin Ashcraft, no pressure there. So put her on the spot, but certainly want to share the love with them. We have distinguished guests from Panorama that has been a wonderful partner in allowing us to look at the working conditions, as you all well know, across our schools in Kentucky. And we have with us today Dr. Emilio Nieves and Doug Essett with us to give us some information from their side in terms of how this is playing out. I will say, because we are educators in the full circle, in one of the Zoom meetings that we had in preparation leading to the release of the survey, I noticed a name, you know, in our Zoom, they have names there, and I was surprised to see this name, and I think, wow, you know, surely that's not the young lady that I know. And sure enough, we came on, it was one of my former tennis players that I had the pleasure of coaching, now works for Panorama, lives in Boston, but it, just right there, there was Zoom connection, and it was her. And one of the greatest gifts that we know education provides is to see that and have that opportunity. Without further ado, appreciate your all's time and the opportunity to share your knowledge on the results of the Impact Kentucky Survey.
Fantastic. Thank you, Dr. Darnell. Really appreciate you didn't disappoint in person. I mean, just meeting you online, but definitely your enthusiasm around this work, which felt not just in the online environment, but in the space today. So thank you for your partnership. Greetings, everyone. Chair Young, Vice Chair Porter Robinson, members of the Kentucky Board of Education, and distinguished guests. I just want to thank you for allowing us the opportunity to be before you and present to you the outcomes from Impact Kentucky Working Condition Survey 2022. And I want to also thank and acknowledge the KDE team, Commissioner Glass, thank you for your leadership, Dr. Darnell again, Dr. Vida Stewart, and yes, soon to be Dr. Erin Ashcraft. My name is Emilio Nieves, and I'm Panorama's teaching and learning team. I'm a former teacher, curriculum specialist, director for diversity prevention and intervention, executive director for social-emotional learning, and I had the privilege and honor of being the first assistant superintendent for social-emotional learning in the United States when I was up in Boston. My career spans across large school systems. I've been an educator for, this is going on my 40th year, so that's the gray hairs. But school systems, including Chicago Public Schools, Robert County Public Schools, six largest in the nation, Boston Public Schools, and most recently Baltimore County Public Schools, the 26th largest school system in the country. And I'm based out of Baltimore, Maryland now. And I'll turn it over to my colleague Doug.
Thanks, Emilio.
Thanks, Emilio.
Hi, Doug Essett. I lead the Strategic Advising Practice at Panorama Education. Been there for four years. Since we're a much, much smaller company. Prior to that, I was in mathematics assessment, standardized math assessment, prior to that, teacher, started in fifth grade and sixth grade. Now I was leading a team at Panorama. Emilio among our team members that work with our larger districts and states and school systems to move from understanding to prioritizing and acting. So a pleasure to be here today and here in supportive role.
And there are other members of our team that couldn't be here, but that support the Kentucky Department of Education in rolling out Impact Kentucky. And so I want to acknowledge them. That includes Nicole Valarocco, who's our account director, and Danielle Boucher, Dr. Darnell's former student who serves as project manager, and Aida Conroy, who's on our team and is a team lead. So about Panorama, very quickly, we're a team of over 300 educators, former educators like Doug and myself, implementation specialists, software developers, designers, and researchers in service of a community of over 1,500 school districts across the country and over 15 million students. And we strive each year to radically improve students, student outcomes with actionable data. In addition to our partnership with the Kentucky Department of Education, I just want to recognize and celebrate the ongoing partnerships between Panorama and districts across the Commonwealth, including Barron County, Boone County, and Owensboro in the areas of social-emotional learning, school climate and engagement, and Panorama's student success. For our time together this afternoon, we'll set out to do four things, hopefully that you'll gain a deeper understanding of and reflect on key components of this year's Impact Kentucky survey administration. And we're going to do a slide demonstration of how to access and navigate your Impact Kentucky results through the Panorama platform. We'll highlight some key insights from the survey results, and then we'll identify some bright spots across the Commonwealth of Kentucky as a result of the survey. At the end of the presentation, we've allotted some time for the board to ask questions. Here's the arc of our journey this afternoon. So we're going to begin first with introductions and purpose setting. And I'm going to focus on an overview of Impact Kentucky 2022, our priorities, and our partnerships. So I'm going to pause right here and allow you to just take a look at some of your statements that I pulled from the Kentucky Board of Education website. And as I think about my work with board members and school systems across the country, I recognize that as I read your aspirations, the importance of connecting the work that's already happening across the Commonwealth, as it relates to your commitment to elevating the voices of all educators so that you can maximize impact for your students. And as I was reading your goals and priorities, there were some words that resonated with me: Pursuit of educational equity, access, opportunity, and advancement of all individuals, especially those in historically underserved communities. So I'm hoping today that the data can help us clarify how we might deepen our work, given the perspectives of caring adults across the state of Kentucky. I'm going to pause again. This is a timeline with our partnership. Since 2019, the Kentucky Department of Education has partnered with caring adults across the Commonwealth and with Panorama Education to administer the survey. Back in 2019, 2020, there was an Impact Kentucky Steering Committee, which partnered with the KDE in the design of the 2020 survey. Back then, the survey, the steering committee was comprised of various educational stakeholders, including teachers and school leaders, but it was all across the Commonwealth. For the 2022 survey administration, KDE engaged the Principal Advisory Council and the Teacher Advisory Council. And working with Panorama has really allowed the state to deepen its approach to valid and actionable survey data. Next, I want to focus on the survey topics that were covered in this year's 2022 Impact Kentucky survey. And as you can see, there are nine topics, and you see a brief description of what each of the topics measure. This school year, we opened the Impact Kentucky 2022 survey for a six-week survey window in the months of November and December for all certified school staff. We received responses from over 38,000 caring adults across the state. And I just think that is something to celebrate because despite the pandemic, despite the weather-related conditions that were experienced here in the state, that despite the shortages that we're seeing in the profession and any number of personal and professional challenges our caring adults face, they still took time to have their voices elevated. And so this is really something that the state of Kentucky should really celebrate. And that excited me as I saw that. Next, we see the voices heard in Impact Kentucky 2022. And so for me, what this data tells us, whose voices were elevated, whose voices were not, whose stories are being told, whose stories are not told. And so it provides us with greater insight into the voices of caring adults across the state. So what did our educators and staff tell us? And this is an important piece. And so as we begin to explore the data... As we begin to explore the data, I know from my own experience that data can sometimes be overvalued, and my inclination is always to go immediately to see what's not working. But I think there are so many things that we can celebrate in the data, and hopefully as we look a little bit further into the data, we'll see some of those celebrations. So as we share insights from Impact Kentucky 2022's survey this year, I want to offer you this frame. Data is storytelling, and you are the narrators. So what is the story that you are going to tell as a board about the working condition of the caring adults across the state of Kentucky? Show you, give you a quick demonstration of the various navigational features that you'll see in Impact Kentucky 2022. And then we also provided a PDF version of the survey results for your review later on after this presentation. So thank you, Meredith. So when you go to the Impact Kentucky 2022, you'll see a radio button that says Explore the 2022 Results here. So you click there. Immediately, you'll see that there are various ways to view the data in the report. I can view it at a statewide level. I might, as a board member, be interested in learning more about one of my districts. I might be interested in looking at one of the schools in my district. Or I might be interested in looking at the data as shown via the AID Educational Cooperative, or I might even want to look at the data via one of the seven school types by school level. For today's demonstration, we're going to look at the statewide results. So if we click on the statewide results, immediately I come to a state summary page, and you'll see up at the top, it'll tell us the name of the survey, up at the, right there, thank you, Meredith. I can also access the 2020 Impact Kentucky results. So looking there, I can just compare data from the two surveys. If I go to the left-hand side of the page, I can see how many responses we had to the survey, and right to the right of that, I can see, show a breakdown. So if you click there, I can get a breakdown of all the data by the various groups that responded to the survey. If I go back up and just click out of that, and then I continue scrolling down the page, I see four columns. In the first column, I can see the nine topics that were surveyed as part of this year's administration. If I want to know more about what staff leadership relationships measures, I can hover over the lowercase i, and I immediately get a brief description of that topic. In the next column, I'm seeing a column titled Percent Favorable. If I forget what percent favorable is, there's a question mark there, and I can get an explanation of what we mean by percent favorable. I'm going to spend a little bit more time in our presentation later on explaining that. But in the third column, I can see how we compare to others nationally who completed questions on the same topic, so we can compare ourselves to others across the nation. And finally, the last column, I can see changes since the last survey administration in terms of percent favorability. So standing on the topic of staff leadership relationships, if I want to learn more, I can tap, click on the Explore. And then immediately, I can see a visual representation of the percent change from the 2020 Impact Kentucky survey. As I scroll down the page, I can see a bow curve, and so I can see the national comparisons there. And if I continue scrolling down the page, I can see how the various groups responded to the survey topic of staff leadership relationships. As I continue to scroll down the page, I see all the various questions that comprise the topic of staff leadership relationships. Thank you. And if Meredith clicked there, and so now I can see a breakdown of the responses, and then I can also see breakdown by the different groups. So that is just a very high-level overview of the way that you can navigate the Impact Kentucky 2022 survey results in the platform. And Meredith. So as board members, you may be wondering what caring adults across the Commonwealth are sharing regarding their working conditions, and what were some of the key insights from the Impact Kentucky 2022 survey that you might be able, as a board, to focus on? And then are there any emergent themes? So we're going to explore these in the next few slides. And what we're going to do is, for the sake of time, I'm only going to focus on the first I'm only going to focus on the first three topics. In the presentation, we do include two other topics that you might be able to review on your own. But for the sake of time today, we're going to focus on Staff Leadership Relationships, Educating All Students, and Resources. So our first topic and related key insights are in the area of Staff Leadership Relationships. So the headline and key insight is that Staff Leadership Relationships remain consistent from 2020 to 2022. And this is a point of celebration. And for me, when I first began to look at the data and examine the data, I thought that this might be an area where we might have seen a decrease. Just because our leaders and the caring adults that they work with have so many stressors in their lives over the last couple of years. And as I mentioned earlier, stressors related to the pandemic, personal, professional pieces that are going on. And so this was, for me, a point of celebration. And for us to wonder, what is happening that caring adults across the state find that their relationships with their leaders are going well? And so I just want to highlight this as a key area of celebration. So I want to take a little bit of time because, as I heard the voices of some of our leaders about what is percent favorable? And how do we calculate percent favorable? So I wanted to share this with you in a visual way. And percent favorable is the way that we calculate our topics, topic scores and our question scores. So at a high level, each topic, as we showed you earlier, is made up of several questions. And then each question is made up of about five answer choices. And so we consider the top two favorable responses when we look at favorable. So we take the percentage of caring adults who chose either of those two top responses and add them together to get our topic score. And so for the topic score, what you're seeing is the percent of favorable responses for all of the questions for that one topic. And here, as you saw earlier in the demonstration, the data allows you, as board members, to see how the results from Impact Kentucky 2022 on different topics compares with other districts or schools across the nation. And what school leaders can do is, if they're interested in comparing, if they're in an urban setting and want to compare their results with other urban settings, they're able to do that. If they want to compare them with other, if I'm a high school administrator and want to compare my data with other high schools across the nation, I am able to do this. So this provides a different perspective on the data.
May I ask a question? A couple of slides back, you showed what was considered the favorable responses. That's actually something that came up in my district. I'm an active teacher in Brown County, and we did not notice that previously. But the middle section where teachers could mark that they don't favor one way or the other, they really don't have an opinion, teachers did not realize that that was skewed as a negative response. And so a lot of teachers, once they realized that, said, oh, if I had known that, I may not have marked that choice because I didn't realize that was going to come back as a negative response on my school or district. So I don't know if that's something we need to make sure educators are aware of when they fill out the survey, or how we can address that. But that was something that came up in my school, that we didn't know that, we didn't realize that.
And I think that's a great comment. And I know that, and later on, I will share a highlight from one of the schools right here in Fayette County, where they really, the school leader sat down with the staff to really understand the results and to really understand what that middle section. And I'll share those results. I think, to your point, it is developing that awareness of what the responses mean. Thank you. So as we pointed out earlier, each question is comprised of several questions. And I pulled some questions out from the Staff Leadership topic. And here, the insight is that overall, educators report that school leaders are understanding, respectful, and friendly. And so that really, just looking at those questions, provided me with a deeper insight into what we mean by Staff Leadership Relationships, but also to hear, again, in spite of all the challenges that the caring adults face, that these words stood out. Understanding, respectful, and friendly. And so again, another area for us to celebrate. And as you can see, there was zero percentile change since Impact Kentucky 2020. So very strong responses indeed on these questions and also supporting the topic. So with this piece, it might be easier for you to see that on your electronic portal. And so I'm going to explain a little bit about what you're seeing here, the different colors and numbers. But the idea is that this is a way of, another way of examining the data in Impact Kentucky 2022 and really centering the experiences of all the educator groups across the Commonwealth. So this is a screenshot of the dashboard for the topic of Staff Leadership Relationships. And so at a high level, let's see how certain stakeholder groups responded to a survey topic. So what you're seeing here is that this is the group of educators who reported in terms of how many years they worked at their respective school. And so we have anywhere from zero to four years to more than 20 years. So this is one way of looking at the data. And you'll see colors of varying intensities. And previously in my work, whenever I saw anything with red and green, it was a red, it was a flag for me thinking it was good or bad. But I just want to highlight for you that, I'll share in a minute, that those colors do not mean good or bad, but rather indicate something else. So this is one way of reporting the data in terms of experience that our educators have of the caring adults. But another way that I'm going to show you is Staff Leadership Relationships in terms of race, ethnicity. And so you'll see varying intensities of greens and reds. And so at the top, let me explain what you're seeing. Where you see all respondents, and then you'll see the gray cells. Those are all the different topics, and the percent favorability of the aggregate of all respondents to Impact Kentucky 2022. Now, what I have highlighted at the right is Staff Leadership Relationships. And you see some areas of lighter orange and areas of darker orange. On the left, all the way to the left, you'll see varying colors of green, intensities of green. So what those colors mean, or what is, but you'll see also, I'm sorry, you'll see some integers also in the cells. There could be a positive integer or a negative one. And so what those integers represent is percent favorability as compared to the average. So for example, in the one cell there, you see plus four, that, and it's in an orange cell, what you're seeing is percent less, the percentage is less favorable than the average of all respondents for that particular topic. If you're seeing something that's a dark green, that means that the percent of favorability was higher than the average. So what you're seeing in terms of this comparison, it's not that it's good or bad. What you're seeing is either more favorable or less favorable as compared to the average of all respondents. So this might be a good way for, if you're interested in really centering the experiences of a certain group of educators, this is another way that our principals are using the data to make some informed decisions to guide action planning. The next theme is Educating All Students. And the key insight here is that overall, the perceptions of caring adults to address issues of diversity have decreased. And so while that is a potential area of growth for the state, what I also encourage you to do is to look deeper into the questions. So that as I look at the different questions that comprise this topic, and there are more than 10 questions, what you'll see there is that educators have responded favorably in the areas of being able to use assessment data to inform their instructions. So we see close to 90% of educators saying that, that they use various forms of assessment data. Then in another area, teachers reported, again, over 80% of them, that they find interacting with students at their school who have a different cultural background with them, they responded favorably to that question. So within this topic, even though we saw a decrease in terms of perceptions of caring adults, digging deeper into the data will allow us to find areas to celebrate. And here again, is our heat map in terms of educating all students and being able to see that across the board, many of our educators feel comfortable addressing issues of diversity with their students. And that we've seen increases among most educator groups. The next theme that I want to highlight and key insight is in the area of resources. And I know this has been a topic of interest to this board. You've been advocating, again, when I looked at your goals and priorities, I realized how hard you've been working with the Kentucky Legislature to advocate for resources for the caring adults. And so as you look at the visuals here, we still see that educators are reporting still least favorably about resources. We saw a slight increase. But when you look at all the topics again, in survey order, one of the things you'll notice is that resources is still one area where your caring adults are saying they need more support. The next themes, they are later for your review later on. But our theme four is Emotional Wellbeing and Belonging, and you'll see an insight there on that. And for the sake of time, again, I'm not going to review those. But also theme five, Supporting Diverse Educators. So I included some insights for your consideration. For the last part of our journey today, we're going to highlight some of the action planning efforts across the Commonwealth and some really exciting pieces that are happening. First of all, we had the privilege and honor of collaborating with the Kentucky Department of Education to offer district and school leaders professional learning sessions as related to the Impact Kentucky Survey 2022 results. And so it was a great opportunity to have school leaders, district leaders, come in and learn about ways that they can examine the data and then take steps to action planning. So in the months of February and March, we had leaders across the state attend our session and walk out with resources to help support them as they continue to examine the results with the caring adults in their communities and then begin to take steps toward action. And Meredith, I don't know if you might be able to go back to the Impact Kentucky website. I really want to share with you some of the wonderful resources that are available to school and district leaders. Again, wonderful collaboration with the team here at KDE. But when you. And up at the top, if you click on Resources. So when you get a chance, it would be great, if you just navigate down the page, you'll see immediately that there's a short video that helps you to navigate the survey results. So I know we did a very cursory overview this afternoon, but this is a short video that helps you to navigate the survey results. And then if you continue scrolling on down the page, you'll see many of the resources that are available. We have the action planning slides from the sessions that we held for school administrators and district administrators. There are data inquiry and reflection guides. And if you can continue scrolling on down, there's even videos from the webinars that we had. So just a plethora of resources that are available to leaders as they continue to use the data to inform their decision-making. Thank you, Meredith. And so I want to highlight one of our schools right here in Fayette County and give kudos to Principal Eric Thornsbury, the leader at Tate's Creek Middle School. And he is a perfect example of what can be done with the Impact Kentucky 2022 survey to go from being informed about the data to action planning and getting results. And just some great work. And if you get a chance, there's a podcast, about a 30-minute podcast that was put together in collaboration with the Principal Partnership Project here. And it is just an inspirational story. And so what was Eric's success in terms of taking the Impact Kentucky 2022 data that can serve as a model for us all? And the title of the podcast is something along the lines from gut planning, I mean, from gut punch to. To growth tool, thank you. From gut punch to growth tool. And so what he explained is that when he got the data the first time, it was like a gut punch to him. As I mentioned earlier, it was, he felt like evaluative. And so he sat down with his staff and asked them, what's going on here? Tell me more. I want to learn more. And then, and so then he sat down with his team. And to your point, Ms. Sloan, he had those conversations. And then they went through each of the topics. And so what does it mean to be less favorable? What does it mean to be most favorable? What does it look like? What does it sound like? And collaboratively, they built a rubric that would define what those behaviors would look like. So that as teachers were completing the survey, they were more informed. And then, and so he used the rubric. And one area that he was focused on with his team was in the area of feedback and coaching. And so now I'll show you the dramatic results for Tate's Creek Middle School. And if you look at the percent changes from 2020 to 2022, we see that there was increased favorability across the board on every topic. And on the area of feedback and coaching, close to over, I think, I can't see it from here, but I believe that's 29% favorability back in 2020 to 65% favorability. Talk about significant results. And so this is what the power in being able to use the Impact Kentucky 2022 survey to drive action and to bring about growth and results. So I just really want to commend Principal Thornsbury for his leadership. And the other partner is, I want to highlight, is the Principal Partnership Project and the work that they've done and how they've embraced the Impact Kentucky 2022 results. And they had some sessions for school leaders to come in. And so they created office hours. School leaders could come in and work with their survey results and get support from the Principal Partnership Project. And then another piece that they did was they had Principal Thornsbury come and present. And then another piece that they did was they had Principal Thornsbury come and present to them as well to share his template for the rubric and really share his story. And I really think of listening to that session, he inspired many school leaders to take similar actions. So I'm curious to see what the next set of results will be. And finally, I'm also commending the work of the Kentucky Department of Education. I know Dr. Stewart and Karen Ashkra, members of our Teacher Advisory Council, again, key players in this partnership to really talk about the results. And I think the key takeaway or the headline from that session with our Teacher Advisory Council is, this data is yours. We can show you at the statewide level, but where it's most meaningful is right there at the school level, those who are closest to the work, those who know the data best and can inform what we can do to change the results. And so I think that was a powerful way again to continue this collaboration as we continue to administer the Impact Kentucky 2022 survey, but elevating the voices of our teachers, getting their feedback, and also empowering them so that they can go back to their school site and collaborate with their school leaders to bring about changes. And that does it for us. Again, thank you for the opportunity to present and to share some wonderful news about the wonderful work happening across this Commonwealth. And if that leave off any questions.
Thank you, board members. Feel free to just use your mic and ask any questions that you may have. I'll just comment that it was lovely to see the example from Tate's Creek Middle because that gut punch, often the human reaction to that is, let's just ignore it, explain it away, put it away. But instead, really grappling with what that means, asking your team, what's going on here? How can we do better? And then I love a really tangible example of let's develop a rubric about what better would look like. So I think that's inspiring.
Great. Thank you, O'Malley. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Really appreciate the updates. At this point, I think we should take this five-minute stretch and bio break, five-minute stretch and bio break, and then we'll get started. Make it to three sets until 2:40, please. All right, welcome back, everyone. Another really in-depth and interesting presentation this afternoon. We have with us David Cook, Division Director and Branch Manager Sarah Snipes, along with Associate Commissioner Kelly Foster, and they're going to share with us an update on the local laboratories of learning.
Great, thank you all. And David and Sarah are actually going to be the stars of the show, and we have some district highlights in the presentation as well. But just a little history to remind everyone, back in the fall, at the Kentucky Education Summit, that was when the commissioner announced the creation of the L-3 program. And if you were here during the curriculum committee meeting this morning, we talked a little bit about the L-3s. But the overall goal of the L-3 program is to give local school districts the flexibility to reflect upon the United Learn Report and take that information and think about how they're doing school and what they would like to see in the future around assessment and accountability at the local level. And then we'll use that feedback here at the department to drive possible changes. So I'll turn it over to David, and I think he's going to talk to you a little bit about the districts that are currently in the program, and then we have some examples.
So Dr. Glass actually started us off really well, talking about the radical inclusion of these local communities, which is one of the key elements, I think, I wanted to just mention that again going forward. How we formed these local laboratories of learning, which was a very inclusive process by which we, in the same way that the Community Coalition for Advancing Education was formed. So on the screen, and I'm going to say just a little bit about the process, and Sarah is the primary manager of the program, so she can detail things a whole lot better than I can. It's involving a very specific design process that these districts are going through, these local communities are going through, to create these, what we're calling prototypes, for new approaches to learning assessment accountability. So you can see sort of on the screen, it's kind of small, I know we kept the honeycombs, but
You do have the slides in your
Yes. But you see these five elements that make up the process, the design process that we are going through. So we have three cohorts, we're going to get to that just a minute. A few of those districts and communities are, they're all in different phases of the process. So Cohort One is over on the prototyping and testing side, which is right. And Cohort Two is basically at the beginning. And then the recently identified Cohort Three is even before that, they're sort of watching Cohort Two, and will process, will begin the process in the fall. Next slide. So as I mentioned, Cohort One is far into the process, they are now testing their prototypes, which is a really exciting phase for us.
So you all should have available to see a little bit more of the detailed description of the problem statements that each of these inclusive local community coalitions created to guide their design work, and then accompanied by a manner of the specific prototypes that are being developed as possible solutions to those identified problems. But back in January, and the KCAD has met once since that time, but we started to raise up some questions to look for trends that we're seeing from the L-3s. So of course, the KCAD being also an inclusive group that lists up those high-level learnings from each of these local communities. So when we asked them to look for patterns that they're noticing, we really saw that Commonwealth Day Nine, which is featured in the United Learn Report, really has been listed up as a priority thing for many of these communities, which simply states that these communities hope that assessments go beyond a snapshot, see a whole child, and reflect what communities need to do to cultivate learning. The KCAD also reflected after hearing about the progress of our Cohort One members that many of them are already expanding on the good work that's already happening, right there in their school districts, but this time taking that lens of inclusion and welcoming individuals in who may not have previously been welcomed in those decision-making spaces. We also are seeing that prototypes are focused on the learning experience. We're currently coaching these teams through the development of that accountability piece, and how we're going to create a really robust system from their shooting experience designs. And then we've also seen that trust is central to this work. Many like Shelby County that we mentioned earlier have used that as an anchor for this work. How are we going to advance the work that we're doing grounded in trust within our community? And then finally, we're also seeing that of course, a fortunate graduate is common in our first cohort members, and it seems to also be a trend rising in the later cohorts as well. And of course, the current size and weight of the system that we currently have is in conflict with many of these ideas that are surfacing from our community. So they're finding that many are competing for time and attention with these prototypes against the current system. And then of course, we also reflect constantly knowing to our leaders of these teams to say, but what are you learning in this process of inclusive design? And so just some quotes here on the screen from a few of our Cohort One communities. You'll notice some trends here around just getting the different perspectives, and then those stakeholders in turn are feeling valued, as you would probably assume from this experience and sitting very literally at the table when these designs are taking place. And so Allen County, for example, said that hearing the voices and perspectives that we rarely hear from or might not be considered has helped how we see things on a larger scale. And I think quotes like that have just resonated through these communities in partnership with this work.
Okay, so what we have, we don't, then you can hear the messages from a couple of our leaders in two of our districts, and then we had a third, but she's actually here in person. So Margaret Gilbert's going to come up after the first two and talk and speak to us in person rather than her video, but
And David, if I can interrupt, because I apologize, in your notes, you do have, we had previously announced Cohort One and Cohort Two members, and you'll notice that we had not yet announced our Cohort Three members, but that has taken place. So just wanted to lift up and spotlight those Cohort Three districts who have begun this process, as David mentioned. Those are Carter County, Floyd County, LaRue County, Rowan County, Warren County, and Washington. And also just want to spotlight that that is our first group that really came to us with eagerness and excitement of saying, we've heard about this, we want to be a part of it. In some cases, like Rowan County, a huge demand from the community itself, with partners like Martin State University knocking on the district's door to say, we want in. So just really exciting to welcome that group with us as well.
Greetings from Allen County. We are so honored to be part of the local laboratories of learning. The partnership with the Kentucky Department of Education, Center for Innovation and Education, Kentucky Student Voice Team, and the University of Kentucky Next Generation Leadership Academy has equipped us with the strategies and tools to facilitate deep conversations with underrepresented voices and perspectives focused on the hopes and aspirations for our children here in Allen County. Our local coalition, composed of 29 stakeholders, has engaged in the inclusive design thinking process to make assessments go beyond a snapshot of a child to reflect what communities need to cultivate learning. Our coalition is currently working on a prototype of a defense of learning system aligned with our local portrait of a graduate. The response from our stakeholders has been overwhelmingly positive. Our community sees the opportunity to build an assessment system around the unique needs of our community that broadens the definition of success and enables our community to have more insight into how our students are performing against the community expectations. Ultimately, we see this as a way to have a more prepared workforce and build a stronger, more vibrant community for our future. We also expect to create a local system of accountability based on the defense system that will communicate with our stakeholders that students and schools are more than just test scores. It is our hope that the lessons learned from the local system of accountability will impact the state's system of accountability in a significant way.
I'm Contessa Orr with the Logan County School District. Our district was excited to be a part of the coalition work because we felt it went right along with what we were doing in our district. We had our profile of success competencies, and we were working to build that common language across our district connected to those competencies. And we believed that the assessment and accountability piece was the next step to do what was best for our students. Our coalition members received feedback from people within our community, within our district. We brainstormed what could be our next step with this process, and we all agreed wholeheartedly that a dashboard that showcased every aspect of a student that looked at the whole child was a great next step for us. We are in the prototyping phase, getting ready to test that dashboard with students and teachers to get their input and their suggestions on how that dashboard is working and what we could do to enhance it and make it better. And we are excited to see where this work continues to take us and take our district and take our students, so that the needs of every one of our students is met.
Okay, so Margaret? I'll let her introduce herself.
Hi, you know, most of you, some of you, you saw me walking in. Hi, I'm Margaret Gilbert, I'm an 11th grader, earned for high school, and I'm a freshman in the district. I'm also an junior for Dr. Brewer. We did have a video of me in my front hallway in my school saying this, but it did not work, so I'm going to just, you know, go with it. That's what we do in education, right? So my school, our district, we took stock of what we already have as a profile of graduate. We had already developed a set of skills, six skills, I believe, we have a set of skills. We have a 12th grade defense, and now we have an 11th grade defense. But we decided to take that after doing empathy interviews with our district and our community. We also sent out a survey to our entire high school, seeing what they wanted to see and what they would have liked to have seen, specifically in middle and elementary school. We are now expanding that defense to fifth grade, yeah, fifth grade, and we're also going to make it more holistic. Because in all of those interviews and the survey that we presented to everyone, we found that all of our stakeholders want more ownership in what we do, specifically our students. They want more ownership in the courses that they take and the way that they test, anything like that. So we're taking that and we're expanding it to all different grade levels, starting with fifth grade. We also are working on partnering more with our community and parents so that they know more of what's going on, because communication is also a childlike desire within our survey. Parents want to know what profile of graduate is, but kids get this big presentation at the end of the year, but they're not really sure what it means or how much it's weighted. So parents want communication. Our community wants to help us, we just need to give them ways to help us. So that's what we're doing with the L-3 process.
So that basically is our presentation for today. I hope that you took away from particularly those last three, those three presentations, the excitement that is going on in these local communities and to tie it back to this morning's conversation about the portrait. That is, it's really great that those communities individually or themselves, not because anybody told them to, have sort of fallen into the safe place. And that place is locally, their communities want to know more about their student than just a test score. And so they're figuring out not only what those competencies are that they want to be looking at, but how do we measure them in a dashboard, as Logan County said, and what are we going to do with that information locally that will impact the lives of those young people as they leave our schools and go out into those communities? We're Kentucky, a lot of folks stay at home after their education is through, and so it's important generationally for those communities to have well-rounded citizens. So we're excited about this work and look forward to what the next two cohorts really embark on, because it may be completely different, and I'm excited to see how much of it is alike, but how much of it also is like, oh wait, we hadn't thought about that, and we want to try to do something completely different. So any questions that you might have before you?
So this notion of bringing these voices together and the account of the intentional inclusiveness of the process, is this being, it sounds as though it's being embraced rather than resisted. Do you think it's a factor, this is certainly a local initiative driven to a very significant degree by local aspirations?
I think that's absolutely, Dr. Robinson, that's absolutely what it's about and why this initiative is different. If you go back to the United Learn Report, the whole thing from the beginning, from Dr. Glass's listening tours, is this is what our state is telling us they want. As a state and in these local communities are then in turn empowered to tell us, to tell their own community, our community says, this is what we want, and that those school districts are empowered to do what their local community wants. So I think that word local is foundationally important to why this is working. If this had been something where we went to these communities and said, we're going to train you on how to do this work, it wouldn't have worked. It had to be, here's a process, we'll give you, we will give you some framing around, we think this is a good way to handle it, but we're going to step back once that happens and say. The radical inclusiveness is seen individually by these communities based on who they are. We have obviously Jefferson County, our largest district, is in a first cohort, and their process is very different than, we were talking in the hall earlier about Maria Independence, a very Berea Independent, a very small, as you probably know, college community with a very diverse, unusually for a town that's small, population. And how they thought, one of the great things that they've done is they've thought about inclusion, and they had people coming to the table by a stakeholder group, like I'm a parent, I'm a teacher, but you know what? Who also has a lesbian daughter. And so I had to come to the table as two different people. I had to come for those, both of those groups. So that inclusiveness isn't just what you normally think of it as, it's people thinking about their identities and their multiple identities when they work with the school district. So Sarah, do you have anything to add?
I would just add that, you know, there are a lot of things by nature that in the process itself, internally, KDE has been there for that process as well. You know, we have welcomed these L3 teams into our core design team, so there's not a week that goes by that we don't have direct feedback and design on their behalf to meet the needs of those who are on the ground, meeting with these teams. But then we've also asked that each of these teams welcome in a community co-leader to walk alongside and facilitate these design sessions with the district employees. And that is really, I think, on building, right, partnerships, but also creating that element of trust that goes beyond the classroom walls and the school walls as maybe work has been done in the past. So that has been an incredible anchor to the work and building that trust and moving the work forward in partnership with some community organizations in each community as well.
And I'm thrilled that we're inching closer and closer to products and deliverables in the process, but I'm also marveling at the process all along the way. We would hope that community engagement was happening everywhere, all the time, about every issue, and it's just not. So the intentionality that the team has brought to build capacity in these communities to do this work and other work that will follow has been incredibly important and gratifying to see. And I also, when Dr. Sweeney asked the question earlier in his presentation, appreciated Dr. Glass's response that one of the ways the department has been so inclusive has been through the L3 process. But I would also just note that the Profile of a Graduate, the Portrait of a Learner, that is an inclusive process as well. New document that Sarah and David have been working on really highlights the inclusivity in this. Claire and I talked at lunch. We've said for years, oh, our gift in town to kids, we do profiles and defenses and stuff like that all the time. This is about every child in Kentucky, and these leading-edge cohort members are proofing that for us in the field right now as we speak. So I'm extremely excited about the work, and I really appreciate your team and the entire team and the leadership of the work. All right, thank you.
Chair Young, before we go on?
Yeah, please.
Yeah, David, I would just ask you, you know, and I did in the curriculum committee, so this is for the larger group, so it's basically similar, but I did want to ask it for the larger group. So in this process of L3, and also going back to when the waiver process was beginning and with the accountability, and I know Rhonda probably gets tired of me asking the question, but I know in that particular process, we also, with the feds, had the opportunity for a waiver request as we were developing these L3s. Are we still looking at that, building that alternative assessment piece for them so that this work is defined in this different way with the opportunity and the access and hearing about the equity that we just heard about before? So can you, like, update us on that particular part of the equation? Because I know that you were working with Shelby County on developing that system also at one time.
Yeah, so Dr. Poe, a couple of things are different. I did mention this in the curriculum debate this morning, but a couple of things I think that are different right now is, number one, if you look at the current SLA law, there's quite a few, most people don't know this, quite a few different places where waivers and other opportunities exist. We all know, many of us, innovative assessment authority that's inside the SLA law, that's a pretty big jump, because it requires, basically, you agree and commit to the system changing over a very short period of time. But there are other ones as well, Dr. Poe, but I think the bigger thing that's going on now at the federal level is a willingness to listen to actual work that's going on. So back to Dr., to Chair Young's comment, the fact that we have districts doing this work, they didn't just write a nice plan, or we didn't just think about a new system. We have districts saying, this is what we need to do, and it's working, is going to make a huge difference when we look at the national landscape and say, we think this is important and a change needs to be made.
Yeah, and, well, I mean, I agree with that wholeheartedly, but I also know that, you know, even, you know, with us wanting to move into the deeper learning network and the summit, that there are still superintendents in those discussions that are, they don't relish going away from a testing and accountability cycle because they're afraid of getting slapped by another situation within our department because of the way our testing and accountability is. So they don't relish going in this direction. There are pioneers that you're working with, but in order for us to transform our entire system, we also have got to be helping them push. We can't wait for the feds to come in and change. I know that there was a waiver process for us at one particular time, because we built that into that assessment. So I just think that, you know, I guess I'm one of those ones that don't want to wait another whole generation. I mean, through the waiver process, this is now, you know, districts have been working on this for seven-plus years. So that means middle schoolers are already graduating, and we got a whole new group coming in. So in order for us to really get to deeper learning and committed educators across the state, we have to be telling them that we're willing to change our accountability and assessment, or they just won't go out on that limb by themselves. I mean, the edge, I applaud the superintendents that you're working with, and I think they are our leaders and our pioneers. But there's over 100 new superintendents, it's less than four years in the state of Kentucky, and they're not willing to go out on that branch by themselves unless KDE is sitting there, or KBE is sitting there saying, we're going to support you in this. And I think that they are supported by you. But in order for us to really transform, we're going to have to transform our own system of assessing, because maybe accountability won't change, but our form of assessment in and of itself could change, I think. Just my two cents.
Thank you, Dr. Poe, and I share your urgency, and I really appreciate that zeal for making this happen for kids right now. One of the first things Jason last ever said to us was that his leadership was about changing the learner experience for all kids in Kentucky, and that's what this work will eventually do. So I also want to know that the signaling is loud and clear from the U.S. Department of Education when it comes to community engagement, when it comes to community-engaged changes to assessment and accountability. And I am convinced that Kentucky is on the bleeding edge of that work right now. So it's always in leadership, and Randy, you and I have learned about this over the years, it's always the finding the tension, the right spot, and to know when to push, when to pull, and how to continue that work steadily ahead. So like you, though, I feel like once in a while if there's something that we could do, to prod a little bit harder, I hope that the team will come to us and say, some of this work could be accelerated if we do X, Y, and Z, and that certainly can come from us as well. I feel just really urgent, as we are two years into this work as a board team, to make sure that we are able to support the department in our districts in these changes on behalf of the kids that we serve.
And Chair Young, also to respond to Dr. Poe, and to something Sarah reminded us of when she named those cohort three districts, those six districts are not and have not been a part of the hard work, right? In the sense that, you know, we got our 35 districts in the Innovative Learning Network that we worked with for years, as Dr. Poe pointed out, Boone County included in that. But when we think about Browning County, we think about Carter County, we think about those districts, Warren, with new superintendents, not with superintendents that, these are districts that recognize that it needs to happen as well, and they've not been on the forefront of... So we have people starting to come to the table that maybe in the past had been very traditional when they thought about assessment and accountability, but maybe now they're ready to join this effort. And the more we get of those, the fact that we just had districts coming to us and saying, I want to be a part of this, and we kind of identified them because they were part of our work is...
Yeah, David, I applaud your work. You know, I'm behind it 100% and the commissioner's work there, too. I just want to, like you say, prodding's a little thing, you know, something that we can continue to expand so that 35 becomes 70, and then 70 becomes 130, then we're up to 170. So I applaud your work. So, I mean, I'm on that same page. I just, you know, ti, you know, learning that the time is of the essence sometimes. And I think that coming out of COV, one of the things that I don't want people to do is rush back to normalcy. You know, I think this is a perfect opportunity. I think our teachers, our staff members and all are looking for that continuation of the transformation. And I was very excited about, you know, our some, the summit, the learning, and our direction that the commissioner is taking. So however we can accelerate that, I just, you know, want us to work on that. And like I said, I've worked with you for so many years, and we've been very supportive of that transformation. And I just know that we have to look at a systems change if we ever want to truly get to where that journey that we're on to be a learning organization, and you're leading a great job. So I want to say that. I don't want anybody to think that, any critical, I just want to support your work and accelerate your work even that much faster. So thank you for indulging, you know, always in answering my questions. I'm just a supporter of that work.
Thank you, Dr. Poe. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Glass for the last word, but for someone who's been a friend of Randy Poe for a long time, I'm sure that Randy's prayer is, Lord, give me patience right now.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In order for this work to take place and scale, you're not only going to have to have changes that happen at the local level so that we can bring forward a model and say, here it is. We're not going to legislature to Washington saying, give us the creative space to try something out. We're going to have something that we've actually developed and piloted and can show that we can scale. I don't think that we have, when it comes to changing state law to do this kind of work, I think we'll get some positive reception to that in the legislature. They showed a willingness to take on and redesign the assessment and accountability system to a greater extent over the last few years. But it will require a change in state law to do some of the things that we're contemplating. So we, Dr. Poe, you're preaching to the choir when it comes to the changes that you'd like to be bringing about, and we'll need some help from the state legislature at some point along the way. And we'll need some help in Washington, because we are recipient of federal funds, and that comes with a state plan that has a lot of regulations and rules attached to it that are a very traditional machine-scored, standardized test-based approach to accountability and assessment. So we'll need some support on that, and we have to understand that there's an entire bipartisan advocacy force that is aligned around making sure nothing happens when it comes to this. So that is powerful. And so I think that if we go in wide-eyed, maybe excited about the opportunity we have ahead, also wide-eyed about the challenge that we have before us, but if we move beyond the conversations around assessment and accountability, which are often how state agencies and state boards see the world is through the lens of accountability and assessment, the bigger work around this is what's happening with experience of students in the classroom. And we don't need any legal changes. We don't need any more money. We don't need any regulatory changes. We don't need anybody's permission to change that. So there's an equal amount of work that's happening on that front around the state as well, simultaneous with this. So I just underscore that the most important thing to do is changing the experience of students in a way that prepares them for the fast-moving world that's already here that's only getting faster all the time. And we have all the authority and resources we need to make those changes right.
Excellent. Thank you so much for the conversation. There's a T-shirt in that for me. We don't need anybody's permission to approve the larger experience. So thank you. Our next presentation comes from the, is regarding the family-friendly school certification. With us today are Chief Performance Officer Karen Dodd and from the Pritchard Committee, Senior Director of Family Engagement, Brooke Gill. Glad you're with us.
Good afternoon. So we are going to, am I not on? Can you hear him? There we go. So we are going to continue this conversation about community engagement, specifically family engagement. You also heard a lot about different dashboards throughout the day today. And February, I sat in front of you and shared with you the latest on our strategic dashboard. So today I wanted to change it up a little bit, and instead of just going through numbers in a dashboard, I thought it would be more engaging for you to hear about some of the work that's actually going on in that dashboard. And so this is what we are doing around family engagement. So Brooke is joining me today to talk about that. So I'm just going to turn it over to her.
Hello. Thanks for having me. I was here in October and gave you a little sneak peek to what we were doing as an update to the missing pieces of the proficiency puzzle, which some of you are very familiar with. What's exciting is that we had really great work to build off of, but something that seems to be a theme with the last couple of presentations is this urgency and a way to make it come to life in a really concrete way. And family and community engagement was seen as that in the missing piece. A lot of the standards were set forth, a lot of the research, but still, schools were looking for something that they could hold on to in a tangible way. So what we've done is attached the standardization to a certificate, which schools are really enjoying, and we got our first application approved about 10 minutes ago, so that was really timely. It came through, I'm like, oh, perfect timing. It's Kenwood Elementary, and Jefferson County is the first one across the finish line. So our application window opened March 1st and closes November 1st. So just a little bit about kind of where we got, and just as members, I want you to be aware that this certificate is out there, especially if a school tells you that they just became family-friendly certified as a board member, I want you to know what that means, and that that really encompasses a lot of what we're talking about in terms of equity and community partnerships. So in order to be certified, you have to prove that your engagement efforts are equitable, basically that you're reaching the hard-to-reach families. So we do not want to see family engagement efforts that bring all of the PTA members back together a couple more times. We want to see family engagement efforts that are getting the families that never show up. And what's neat about the work that we've been, this journey we've been on...
How do I turn that over?
Thank you. This is part of the statewide family engagement center. So Kentucky is one of 12 states who received this grant. We took this opportunity to capitalize on the missing piece, to begin our certification process, and we also have a learning network of 60 schools. So the certification brings together NCFL, National Center for Families Learning, in Jefferson County, Learning Grove in northern Kentucky, Partners for Education at Berea College, and of course, the Kentucky Department of Education. The dual-capacity framework is the base of our work, so also, as board members, I want you to be aware that everything that we're doing is anchored in the U.S. Department of Education's framework for family engagement. What's great about this framework, especially coming out of the Department of Education, is that it's one page, that you can read it in about two minutes, and that it's in common, just common communication that you can sit around, staff meeting with families, and talk about different challenges and conditions for family engagement. These next few slides that you've got in your deck, so I won't really spend much time on a, I'd rather get some certificate piece, but these are the core beliefs that anchor all that we're doing. And so the first thing we do in all of our professional development and any of the programs and strategies that we put out is that we have an understanding that these core beliefs anchor all of our work. All families have dreams for their children and want the best for them. All families have the capacity to support their children's learning. Family and school staff are equal partners. And the fourth one, sometimes we have... equal partners. And then the fourth one, sometimes gives folks pause, but that the primary responsibility is with the school leader. If the school leader is not on board, it won't stick. So families and educators can be gone home, but if we're not getting the building leader on board, the program will not work. So with this foundation, we've created a system that we're getting some national recognition for. So that should be exciting, too. We actually have our researchers from the NYU Pressurists Center presenting this weekend in San Diego about how the process that we've created in Kentucky is creating a system of equitable family engagement. And we think that's because we're actually giving points for reaching hard to reach families. And so if we have folks that say, oh, we've got 90% of our families showing up to the bounce house night, our question back is, how did you develop real relationships with families during bounce house night? How many actual one-on-one conversations took place? And two, who are the 10% that didn't show up? And were they reached in a really intentional way? So if they don't speak English, were materials translated? If there's not transportation, how did you overcome that behavior? Did you offer childcare? So everything kind of comes back to if they're not being, if they're not showing up, why not? The essential conditions of the dual capacity framework anchor the certificate as well. Everything starts with the relationship. We have to make sure that our staff and our families are having one-on-one conversations. So one of the things that we ask of our building leaders is, in place of maybe planning some of these larger events, what we recommend instead is give that 30 minutes to an hour back to your teachers to make three phone calls. We'd rather than make three phone calls to families you haven't seen than have bounce house night with 200 families. And not to say that bounce house night is, you know, terrible, but it's not family engagement. It's creating a welcoming school environment, and that's pretty much all it is. So we have to get beyond the big events into the one-on-one conversations. So what we've created for Kentucky is, one, the partnership guide. It's about 16 pages, but it's your all-in-one, all-in-one stop document of all things family engagement, dual capacity models, online trainings, your school self-assessment, and your criteria for getting your certificate. The second thing is the online training and self-assessment. So schools can go in right now. There are free trainings. They're ELO approved. You can go in and take the three-hour module and walk through your school self-assessment, which is the update to the missing piece for Brooke. We also have a digital playbook. This has been incredibly popular. I don't think we can get into it. Probably not today. Okay. So the digital playbook is just a fancy way of going through concrete activities. So you can go to your self-assessment objective, let's say it's relationship building. You scored a level two. Your school's trying to be a level three. So you go into the digital playbook, and it flips through concrete activities that your school can implement. So it's pull it right off the shelf packaged ideas. And that's what we really heard from schools, too, is to get to the specifics of what you want our school to do, rather than saying, build one-on-one relationships. What does a one-on-one relationship look like? How do we start building those? One of our most popular resources was actually a welcoming, a welcome call script. And it really just said, hi, my name is so-and-so. I'm your child's fifth grade teacher. And it walks them through exactly what to say, because a lot of our teachers are really intimidated to make those calls, to have those one-on-one conversations. What if they ask me this? What will I say? What if they press me on this issue? So the script has been incredibly popular, which told us that our teachers really want some more of those just concrete, easy tools. So the digital playbook is packed full of all of those ideas. And then the fourth step, once you're kind of working your way through there, is to apply for your certificate. So these are the objectives of the certificate, relationship building, two-way communication, shared responsibility, community partnerships. Oh, I think that was a lot into the book. It's okay. Again, our application window opened March 1st, first went through. And on the strategic dashboard, KDE Strategic Dashboard for Community, Family and Community Partnerships, we're going to be tracking the number of schools that get their certificate. So we're working with Parent Shop on, what does that look like in terms of percent of schools, number of schools? We also want to have an even number, or at least a balanced number of elementary, middle, and high, rural, urban, some of our high DLL populations. So we're just looking at how we can track that while keeping in mind some of the equitable practices that we're trying to hold on to. I think that's it.
Yeah. And we'll track that twice a year. So the first numbers will come out in Jizz on our dashboard, and then we'll update it again in January.
Any, any questions?
Could you remind me what school in Jefferson was the one that came through?
Kenwood.
Kenwood. Okay, excellent. Yay.
Just a compliment that the guy wrote for the playbook with the different, what's the term?
Concreted ideas?
Yes. Well, the, the title of the document. I want to make sure I call it correctly.
Playbook.
The playbook, digital playbook.
I had a text that we threw it, and it was really great research-based analysis for schools. So thank you.
Yeah, it's cool. It looks like you're actually turning pages. But yeah, it's really appealing. Our family resource and new service centers have been incredible partners, and they're finding this hooking into their work really well, and just trying to pull them up as in-school staff support to fill teacher capacity. So that's kind of where we're going next with this, knowing we can't be everywhere, but we do have a frisk in every building. And so how can we leverage our frisk coordinators to know these materials and be that onsite coach for our teachers? So that's going to be partnership underway. And working with Sarah, we've got intentionally overlapping the L3 for the third cohort with our family friendly schools. So Brown County, huge participant with family friendly schools and also a participant in the next L3. So we're excited to see how the two intersect, because you have to create a family engagement action team, which can also be your L3 team. So what's been great about working with KDE is that we're trying to constantly kind of feed each other agendas and goals so that schools don't feel like I'm either doing this or I'm doing this, but feeling like, ooh, if I do this, I might also get family friendly certified. So that's been into just to see how everything crosses over.
And also heard a lot about storytelling. And one of the other things that we want to do is tell the stories of those who get certified. So we're looking to start that this summer as well to ask those folks if they would share the path they've gone down with this certification, because it's not going to look the same for everybody, just like the L3 work. It's going to be individualized for each one of the schools. So we want to have them actually share their stories so people can see, like, there are all these different ways that you can get this certification.
And this is McCrory.
Yeah, go ahead.
How many schools do we presently have working for this certification?
We have 60 schools in the learning network. And so those are our front runners to get certified because they are receiving dedicated training and TA to get their certification. But the certificate's open to any school in Kentucky. So anybody can go onto that website and kind of work their way through the certificate. So we don't know how many schools are maybe working on it. We've had a couple of folks reach out and ask for some technical assistance that weren't on our radar at all. So that's really exciting. And then we've been promoting that it's on KDE's dashboard. And that's been really encouraging to folks because it's incredibly lucky behind it, something that's being tracked and looked at by not just one community-based organization. So.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Love to hear about maximizing those initiatives, maximizing those initiatives, too. Thank you.
Dr. Young, can I just make one comment? I just wanted to say thank you to the group. Learning Support in Northern Kentucky is a partner, as they talked about. In our last spring convening, unfortunately, the commissioner couldn't make it. He was tied up on his schedule. But we, we had hosted, the Northern Kentucky Ed Council had hosted Learning Grove, and they did a workshop on this entire toolkit with the Northern Kentucky superintendents and that co-op there. And they, it was well receptive. And that toolkit is, it's just excellent. If, if you haven't got, if my fellow board members, if you haven't got the opportunity to go through it, you need to. And we have several schools, and we're hoping to get all 18 of them to get certified as family friendly schools. So I just want to say kudos to the work that they're leading. And the Northern Kentucky superintendents up there really enjoyed a lesson going through that toolkit. They really learned a lot. So thank you all.
Excellent. Thank you so much. As Dr. Todd mentioned earlier, we were, are also going to have a presentation, an update from the facilities team about the new House Bill 678. So Associate Commissioner Kenny and her team are coming forward with her, you know, Che Ritter, Matt Ross, and Greg Dunbar, not in that order. Che, Greg, Matt.
Thank you very much for the introduction.
This might be senile evil.
I don't know what Matt's going to do down at the other end. Thank you very much for the introduction. Most of you do know Matt and Che because they are with us regularly here at the state board meeting. But I invited Greg Dunbar to come with us for this presentation today. And really just want to introduce Greg as our facilities range manager and acknowledge the good work that Greg and his team do each and every day. They have a tall responsibility oversight of the approximately 1,400 school buildings here in the Commonwealth of Kentucky, and they are a very small but mighty team. There's Greg, four architects, and one resource manager, manager, and that's a lot. So I wanted him to be present and to, to just acknowledge their good efforts. Things are a-changing a little bit. We are, we have been reporting out to you the good work that Greg and his team and Che with, with his oversight have been working on regulations, statutes, and policies related to school facility construction, financing, and planning. But it's, as they say, we interrupt this message for a very important message, and that's, that's the interaction with House Bill 678 that has come along. So the General Assembly has passed this legislation. And we are here today to kind of present to you on how things are going to change for our local school districts and how things are going to change for you as a board. Earlier today, you all looked at new and amended DFPs, and you also did process some waivers, approved some waiver scores. And things are going to change a little bit along with 678. We did have a chance to present to all of our superintendents last week because 678 didn't have an emergency clause on it. So it's in effect right now. So we've already briefed them a little bit. And while we worked through a little bit of kinks on the technology systems, we are ready to roll it forward. So I'm going to turn it over to Che. He did an excellent job presenting to the superintendents last week. And, and Matt is here also answering questions. We're also working on some guidance to our local school districts. So that should go out probably next week so they have a little more information. So Che, on to you.
Good afternoon, everybody. Go ahead, Matt. Or I can use the flicker if you want. So House Bill 678, it sort of snowballed. We basically were invited over to talk to a roomful of people. And I'm going to make sure there are no legislators in the room. I'm just saying secrets here, but we had a conversation with the sponsors.
It's live stream.
It's still live stream. It's not public. But their intent of this bill was, I think, there were a couple angles to this one. And it was pretty public is that, you know, construction costs got very expensive very quickly in the last couple of months. And this was an effort to speed up some processes. But with that came, I think, the ability for us as a department and Greg's branch and my division to look at our processes and see what we can improve, which of course, as most of you know, we've been working on for quite some time. So we're, we're optimistic this is going to provide opportunity, opportunity to make our processes better, therefore helping the districts, which is why we're here. But also to allow districts a little more flexibility and for you all to give you all a little less work to do in some cases, but still provide the, you know, ample amount of oversight for these projects. And as, go ahead. Oh, I'm sorry. You already had it up there. So basically, there's a two-year period. And to sort of paraphrase something Dr. Blasch said the other day on the call, this is kind of a two-year experiment, if you will. But in this interim time, we're going to review what's happening with these facility projects and work, of course, with the General Assembly on making tweaks to this. So this two-year period, districts may, if permitted, opt out of our review process for facilities. Now, what does that really mean when you say opt out? Well, they still have to follow the applicable statutes and regulations. They're not going to be able to just go crazy and just build whatever. There are a lot of rules to the, the way they do these buildings. They have to follow all of them. That's a very important point we want to get across to everybody. This is not just a blank check. But it also allows them to basically go through the whole process without our oversight as much. And if you think of it as a speedometer, we were on one side of that, providing all kinds of oversight. And now these districts are going to have a lot less oversight. So that needle's moved quite a bit. And with that comes, obviously, a lot of responsibility. Now, there are professionals in this business, the architects that provide services to schools, the fiscal agents that help underwrite the bonds. And everybody has invested interest to make sure these things are done correctly. The department over the years with, you know, Greg's branch and his predecessors before him have spent countless hours helping districts make sure that these buildings are built correctly and that things are done the right way. They may also, this is a little bit different, is actually use an estimate, what we would call a little early architect estimate to issue bonds. This has never been done before with schools. We've always had to wait till the actual cost would come in as far as, here's the construction cost, an estimate, and then they would issue bonds. This, they'll be able to issue bonds pretty quickly. Now, I think the idea behind this is, of course, to allow them to catch a lower interest rate, which will eventually save them money. Okay, Matt? Thank you. Again, they have to follow statutes and regulations. No one gets a pass from that, and it's very important. And go ahead, Merritt. Thank you. So part of this, which will impact you all a little bit, and sadly, you'll see less of me. I know that disappoints everybody, is that the DFPs that come to you are, we're going to be able to approve, approve, excuse me, in-house. Many Greg's staff will be able to review these. And unless there's some reason that we disapprove, the, the boards can appeal to you all. But as you see, most, a lot of these DFPs are, you know, the, the votes are there, everyone's in agreement, and they will, you know, push them forward to you all. But this will help, we think, save us some time, too. And a huge benefit is, and I mean no personal offense, that you all meet every two months, we can approve these and get them back to the district very quickly. So this will save them quite a bit of time as well. Again, we're going to report these approvals to you all. So you all will still be in the loop as far as which district facility plans are approving. And this is one of the, earlier today, we were just talking about this. Of course, they may now include extracurricular activities in any priority, which would allow them to use restricted funds. And this morning in our operations committee, we had four waivers in front of that, that operations committee tied to that same issue, which will now be, you know, basically, we won't need to do those waivers now. So we think that's going to be a pretty important facet going forward. And go ahead.
30 days. Sorry. 30 days. We, we have to, KDE has to approve or deny within 30 business days of receipt. So that'll, that'll speed that process up.
Yes, 30, yeah. So there's a clock as we get to complete district facility plans and property purchases is the other one. We have 30 days to actually get the approvals, get the disapprovals back to the districts. So now with this, even the districts that opt out of our review process, it doesn't mean we're going to shut the door on. We're actually still going to be there to provide them with technical assistance, any issues they run into. Well, you know, we've got staff that can help them through that. It is retroactive. So if we have any projects that are sort of pending, they can, if their boards pass that resolution. And I think as of this afternoon, we have eight boards that have already done this. So it's moving very quickly. Again, they can include any extracurricular facilities and that, any priorities, so they can use restricted funds. And the one kind of caveat to all this is, any project that uses federal funds, we have to still follow the federal guidelines, which requires the state to approve the project. So we're kind of making a different path for those projects and keep them out of this loop for now. And so as far as reporting, the, the bill now law actually asked us to conduct a review of all these administrative regulations. And this will sound very familiar, to basically continue doing what we're doing right now, except it gives us a June 30th, 2023 date that we're going to basically, you know, provide more information on our changes. But basically identify updates needed for regulations and all these things that we've been working on. So for once, we actually have a head start on this. Very happy about that. And basically, for all the reviews and approvals we do, they really want us to take a detailed look at why and when we do them, how quickly we do them, things like that as well. We're, we're going to also talk to the Department of Housing, Buildings, and Construction, talk about merging regulations, merging certain portions of regulation. And then we report back to two different committees. And this bill did have an emergency clause that was effective, I believe, April 8th of this year. Are there any questions?
So I think overall, some of the things that we can take away from this new legislation and how it's gonna impact your work is new and amended DFPs will only come to you as a board if they are disapproved at the staff level, and we have to do that within 30 business days. So that's the only time that you will see new or amended DFPs. The department will continue to approve acquisitions, how it's gonna disapprove your property, so that still comes to us. I think the other important part that the General Assembly has now weighed in on is, they have weighed in and recognized the importance of extracurricular facilities as part of the educational process by allowing restricted funds to be used for them. So I think we, as a board, have talked about that before and recognize the importance. I think we heard earlier this morning the importance from the student voice, how important it is to social and emotional learning and support the students that they have access to those extracurricular facilities. So that's happened. The districts and their role, how it will change, they will have more of the responsibility on the front end for managing and keeping up with the statutes and regulations and all the processes related to financing and constructing and planning. And so I did have the opportunity to talk to some district finance officers and some superintendents earlier last week, and they said, why would we not do this? Why would we not opt into this? I think it's really important that districts have a strong experience level in their districts with construction projects. It's important that they have really solid relationships with their contractors or engineers or architects and their financing, their fiscal agents. And with that, all that support, certainly, this will make things go a lot faster. However, if we have some districts that aren't confident in that, they can still choose to utilize the district support services and Greg's branch to do things more the old-fashioned way, I guess we would say. So we'll be here either way to help districts, whether they choose the 678 route or if they use the traditional route as we go forward. So we'll stop and see if you have any questions.
Ms. Bloodworth?
Just a little question. So what are the unintended consequences of people that maybe jump in too fast and don't know what regulations, what happens?
Well, again, you know, they still have to follow all the statutes and regulations. Housing, building, construction is always there to monitor and help with the safety and health issues, so that's really important. And they'll continue to interact with housing, building, construction, or their local planning people. And, you know, a lot of our districts, quite frankly, they work in this area quite frequently. And so they're very familiar with the processes. So it's really just for those districts that might need a little more handholding, that they just don't have the confidence to do that yet, and we're certainly there to help them. If any of the districts run into a problem, if they choose to go this way, we'll be there to support them in that manner as well. So we'll try to help them through it.
It's a great question. Very helpful. No other questions? All right, thank you, so much to you.
Thank you.
Our next presentation is the audit update and expense reports for the state board of education and commissioner. And this comes to us from Robin and Karen Worth.
Is it Ann-Brian?
It says Ann-Brian. Is it Ann-Brian?
No, that's the next one.
Okay. Does she wanna come up?
She wanna talk about her budget?
He's like, I don't wanna go through her audit.
So about twice a year, we come and do a report out to the board on audit findings. And Karen is here with me today, and we've also provided to you the expense reports. We provide those about twice a year, too, of both the Board of Education and the Commissioner's office. So we'll let Karen just walk us through the audit findings.
Good afternoon. Thanks for having us here this afternoon. Audit finding came in, the SWAC, the state single-wide audit, came in on February the 9th. That is typically a report that is done to review financial reporting, our UNIS system, SEEK, our school community nutrition functions. And we did not have any findings in our audit one of our SWAC this year. Volume two has been delayed. The APA's office has requested an extension due to COVID funds. They're finding it very difficult to get those things done. So we do not have information on volume two, but I'll bring that to the board when we do receive it. And any questions about the commissioner or expense report from the board? We'll be happy to answer.
Catching none.
Yeah.
All right, we're gonna roll into the biannual budget.
Perfect.
Brian, just come up.
And now Brian misses.
Yes. Karen, before you start, I just wanted to thank Karen and her team for really being the leaders of developing the biannual budget for us this year and the state board, all your attention and effort in really considering appropriate additional budget requests, which was invaluable. It turned out really well for us. And as well, the rest of the department, because it takes all the department staff and all the department offices really to be responsive to our needs as we develop the budget and try to get all the paperwork that really has to go in to make it successful. So overall, the education budget for us turned out well. We are very appreciative of the work of the governor and the General Assembly in advocating for funding for education of our students and support of our staff. So I'm gonna let Karen just kind of go through, or go through quickly at a pretty high level, but if you have any questions along the way, don't hesitate in your office.
And I love it how they do be preparedness for what ABRs were, but not to worry we wouldn't really get any. And look what happened.
Look what happened. Thank goodness for improved revenues.
That's right.
All right, we'll get started. The first slide you've got here is our SEEK appropriation. As you all know, that is our largest appropriation at the department. The appropriation of SEEK takes up about 72% of KDE's budget, so that kind of puts it into perspective on how large it is. And also for the state executive budget, it's about 24% of the state executive budget. So SEEK is a big player in the state's budget. We did really well. Fiscal year '23, per pupil amount is higher than it's ever been at 4,100, and for fiscal year '24, it will be 4,200. So very, very excited about that. Also included in SEEK is some language that does include full-day kindergarten funding. That was a big priority for the board, so happy to see that. About $126 million of the SEEK appropriation is for the full-day kindergarten. Also included is additional funding for the National Board Certified Teacher Salary Supplement. So we had asked for that to be funded 100%, and we received the dollars to do that in both fiscal years. So very happy about that. They also included a salary supplement for speech pathologists in the school districts. So about $2.3 million in our budget is for salary supplement for that group of teachers. And then, let's see, we also had transportation funding. We had requested, I believe, $176 million to bring people transportation up to 100%. We received about $59 million, brings us up to about 69% funded. So while we're not 100%, we're happy with that amount. And also did fully fund our vocational aid transportation, so another win for us. And those were things that were on our priorities. There was language also included about any excess SEEK. You know, numbers are calculated a year in advance. Sometimes there are issues that happen that do allow us to have a little bit of excess SEEK. If we do, it will lapse back to the state general fund. So that was language included. This is the chart that you all are very familiar with. I know we showed it last month and all through the process last year. This is back in October, when you all finalized your ABR priorities. This is the list. So you've got two columns for fiscal year '23 and '24. That was our ask, our requested amounts. And then our House Bill 1 columns are gonna show you how much we actually got. So while some are partially funded, not fully funded, we're still very, very appreciative of the amounts that we did receive.
Karen, I also think when you look at the spaces on there, the ones that we don't have dollars yet, it allows us opportunities to continue to advocate for those needs. And it looks like the interim is going to become a really important time to advocate. So as we think about building our budget for the next biannual budget, using the opportunities of appearing in front of committees to really talk about these other ones that were not quite funded will become very important. I know one of those is CATS. CATS is getting some support right now from ESER Funding that will expire in September of 2024. So we've already talked about getting presentations in front of interim committees, talking about when that money falls off, it's gonna be really important that in our next funding cycle, we continue to have funds so we can support all those great things that are happening in schools with our technology efforts.
And just to follow up on what Robin said earlier, you know, more than half of our ABRs were funded this time. And I looked back at House Bill 192, and we had two out of 14 that were partially funded. So very good session for us. And next, I'll talk about one of the other appropriation units within the department, which we refer to as BOSS, the Bureau for Support Services. That's the operating side of the house, so that's gonna contain Robin's office, David Couch's office, Deice's office, the commissioner's office. And that's the operating side of the house. There was some language included in our BOSS appropriation that's not new, but I just wanted to highlight it today. We do receive a certain amount of money for our school and community nutrition match. We receive $400 million from the Department of Agriculture for breakfast and lunch, and we have a certain dollar amount, and that $3.8 million is that match. We also receive line of travel money in BOSS, as well, we have the KFIX money, the Facility Classification System money is in BOSS. We did receive the $600,000 and the carry-forward language, so that's a bonus. And then again, we were funded for the AP and the IB exams. So we received a total of $3.6 million. So a million of that is for free reduced lunch students, and $2.6 billion, million, I'm sorry, I'm gonna be in seven M, million is for first come, first served. So very, very exciting. And I know you all heard Dr. Sweetie talking about the AP exam cost. And with those funds, we were able to bring those dollars down to $10 per student. So very excited about that. There is one new thing in BOSS this time, and that is data SEA. We have had data SEA, and I believe it was fiscal year '20 was the last budget that it was funded. And there is $3.5 million in each fiscal year for data SEA. So if you remember, those are computers to coal counties in the state. So that money will go through David's office as well. The other appropriation unit that we have in KDE is called LARS, and that's our programmatic side of the house. This chart is very familiar to you and to superintendents in the school districts, as this is a lot of the grant programs that go directly to schools and to districts. So what we did was we shaded the ones in green. So all of the ones in green had an increase over the current year appropriation. So for example, Advanced Kentucky, currently at 1.7, will receive 1.9 in the next two years. So I wanted to shade the ones in green to show you ones that did increase. There's a new one on there that we did not have funds for until this next upcoming grandium, and that's the Early Learning Initiative. And that was one of your all's priorities as well for the ABRs. So very, very happy to receive the $11 million to support Mickey and her good work in OTL. Career Tech, Career Tech is a big winner. We're so, so excited about the money that we received for Career Tech. We received an additional $58 million in each fiscal year for our local area of educational education centers. So those, we affectionately call our laybacks. So $58 million in each year, so that's gonna be really great for our laybacks. We also received, I remember us talking about those step and rank increases for ATC teachers that are never funded. We received the step and rank amounts, so that was a bonus for us. And then there was some language that was included. It's really not anything that has any type of an impact because it pertains to the current fiscal year that we're in. It says that in fiscal year '22, you're gonna base your layback allocations on data that you pulled from fiscal year '19. That process was already in place. This language, it really doesn't have the impact moving forward, but it's still in the budget language. Also for Career Tech, in the School Facilities Construction Commission budget, not in KDE's, but in their budget, there was $155.6 million for projects for layback center renovation. So the districts listed here, they all received some dollar amount in SFCC's budget for renovation projects at their laybacks. So very exciting. KSC, KSD, another area of great need that we were really happy to see. I know Cheryl Young, you had reached out about, are we okay with it? You know, we had asked for an additional million and a half that we were so glad to get at House Bill 192. We kept that money that's in our base, and then on top of that, they gave us our step and rank increases. So that's huge. That's gonna really help the personnel side and free up that extra money for the operating that they so desperately need. So very, very happy to see that.
I will say for both Career Tech Ed and for KSC and KSD, you know, sometimes it takes many, many years of really advocating before you finally get it. And it's so rewarding to see after that advocacy on behalf of the schools, the principals there, Greta Hilton and her team, and David Horstman and his team, really advocating to get these things for their teachers and their students. It's taken a long time, but it finally happened. So very appreciative that, you know, it does make a difference when you have money. And this was the time that there was money, and we're so glad that so much of it is coming to education.
Salary increases. So there's two different subjects on this particular slide. We decided to put them together just to kind of touch base on both areas. There was not specific language or funding attached for school district increases. Instead, the language in the budget bill encouraged, by the General Assembly, school districts to use their additional resources they're receiving through House Bill 1 to give races to certify and classify staff. So no funding for teacher and support staff salaries. There was language in House Bill 1 for state employee increments. As effective July 1st, each state employee will receive an 8% increase. There is no increase for fiscal year '24, but there's language that says there is an intent to provide an increase based upon a classification and compensation study that Personnel Cabinet is required to supply to the General Assembly. So good news for state employees, I'll say. There's other education funding throughout the House bill. It's not necessarily in KDE's appropriation. Again, in the School Facility Construction Commission budget, SFCC, there are offers of assistance. In the previous budget bill, that was $58 million that could be offered. They raised that to 85. So again, a good win for districts. And additionally, in SFCC's budget, there are special offers of assistance. There are some districts that have been, some buildings in specific districts that are listed on the slide, that have been appropriated funds for renovation or construction of those particular school facilities. One thing that we did wanna know is there was language also added with that that said that if you were a district that received this funding for this budgeting, that you were not eligible for it in the next budgeting. So hopefully, it'll be a cycle-type thing. We'll go move to others on the list. Also in CHFS's budget, you all know that we do receive about $49 million for friskies. And in CHFS budget, there was also, I think it was $9.4 million, about $9.4 million. And basically, that raises the per pupil eligible amount that goes into their calculation of how much a center will receive, raised at about $26. So we will continue to transfer our $49 million to them. We do that twice a year. We do not keep any frisky dollars at the department. It just flows through us right to CHFS. But again, another good increase for frisky, $9.4 million, so. House are here. We receive $100,000 in our budget, and they also received $1,005,000 in the Education Cabinet budget. So another bit of money to help them support their good work. And then also in the Ed Cabinet's budget was a program funded that is in Jefferson County. It's called Everybody Counts. It's $5 million each year. And I don't know much about it, I'll be honest, but I do know that it's a plan for students that do not have a plan upon graduation. It's to find employment for them, they have some participation. participating companies, or it is to try to get them into post-secondary education. So that program started in fiscal year 22. So this is a pretty new program, so. Another good thing for our state-operated campuses, KSD, KSD, and then our FFA Leadership Training Center, is we received the first biennial capital projects that we requested in our six-year plan. So that's huge. That's a, you know, that's a root pool, that's an HVAC pool for both of those campuses that's so desperately needed. It's campus maintenance. And then it's going to be a new facility at FFA Camp to make it more of a year-round facility. So very, very excited about our capital budget. We asked and we got, so very happy about that.
So Karen, how does that work? Those projects don't have to happen in the biennial?
They'll set them up as capital projects, transfer funds in?
Other building funds?
Yes. Also just NYI, there's some language that's included in our budget that is important to school districts. That language has been in past biennial budget requests and in the language. It's the allocations to school-based decision-making councils. They cannot go below $100 per pupil when they allocate to their schools. Also, there's some new language in our budget that's called Math Nation Program. $3 million in fiscal year 23, $2 million in fiscal year 24. And that is, that is a middle and high school math program. Again, a new program for us, so we're not really familiar with it yet, but we will be. So that's in our budget as well.
Who runs it? We don't know yet.
This is one that obviously wasn't a request of the department. So someone has put that in the budget for us. So we'll be reaching out, learning more about this program. Surprise!
Also, in our LARS appropriation, there is language that was added that is new. And basically it says, you know, the chart that we showed you, we call those the LARS lines or the alphabet. It's all of those different grants and the dollar amounts associated. They asked us to evaluate and review each of those items and to report to the Joint Committee on Education and A and R Appropriations and Revenue by August 1st of 2023, what the benefits of those programs are. So we will be working with you and with our school districts to get that information together. We do have a good amount of time to do that, so.
I think it would also allow us an opportunity to kind of provide input and feedback on some of those large items that we have lost over the years. Professional development is one of those that we just, we need contraction on it. So we could include in the study some information that would help let these leaders understand the importance and relevance of some of the things that have gone unfunded.
That is the end of the budget presentation. So we can roll into Brian's legislative process, excuse me, or I can take any questions you may have.
Yeah, let's pause for budget questions first. Mr. Campbell?
Can we get a copy of the budget information?
Sure.
Absolutely.
Because I'm looking at it. I appreciate it.
I have a problem with the... And Miss Love?
I want to go back. You mentioned something about the salary being subordinated for students. I thought almost in our district, it's at 100% that their salaries will come from this and no longer from money that we previously had?
You know, I checked with, I checked with district support on that because I thought the same, that's the same thing. We not paid that before. That's not been funded before. So we think that we're going to be 100%, but we're not sure that we've gathered everyone through the PSC process in order to know that. So we're thinking...
First, for us, yes.
Yes.
It's definitely if they have the certification.
Yeah, they have to have that certification.
It's like National Board Certified Teachers. And if we don't have enough in the appropriation, then we do, it likely can be with National Board Certified Teachers, we do the proportional percentage.
And Miss Beck?
Yes, I heard a question about preschool. I know that the statement was made in some of the committee meetings that if we were to do universal funding for four-year-old preschools, it would put our day cares out of business. And I just wondered, are you aware of the studies that have looked into that to see if that would actually be the result of ending preschools? I don't know if there are districts in Kentucky who have taken that route, or other states who could maybe look.
We haven't researched that to see if there, there is information or other studies out there. I don't know if Greta's not here. Some of our preschool folks may be able to answer that question a little bit. I think one of the concerns that might be a more legitimate concern is just the facilities and space. We know that some school districts have space to do that and others may not. But as far as putting day cares or private childcare out of business, I'm not aware, I'm not aware of that. I really couldn't answer for that question.
All right. Thank you. Brian?
Thank you. I know we're short on time, so we can make this pretty quick. First, I just want to say thank you to everyone for your patience and understanding over the last three months. It's been an exciting time to come on board. So definitely thank you. As Robyn mentioned, we're quickly turning our attention to the next biennial. So the 23 session will be here before we know it, and then we'll be rolling into another interim where they'll be working on the next biennial budget. So we are definitely thinking about interim committee presentations on a variety of different topics that we will suggest. And then, so with that in mind, I wanted to kind of start by just mentioning that 2022 is an election year. The entire House and the half of the Senate is up for reelection. Primaries are coming up next month. They're deadline to register vote in the primaries that already passed. But for those that are not registered, that are listening or coming of age, you definitely have time to register for the general election in November. So we will see a pretty different General Assembly when they gather back in January. There's quite a few retirements in the Senate in particular, which usually doesn't see as much turnover. So just keep that in mind as we go forward. There were a lot of bills that ran out of this session. We don't have time to run through them all today. I did want to kind of hit a few that we haven't talked about or haven't been discussed a lot, that we didn't weigh in on, that may have an impact as we go forward. So Hospital Eight is the tax reform bill. So I mention this because what they're trying to achieve here is to lower the income rate as they expand the sales tax base. So they're trying to balance that out, which for an agency that is fully funded from the General Assembly, is going to have a big impact on us depending on how this goes. So I just want to make everybody aware that that's going to be going into place. So the other one that's kind of interesting is Hospital Ten. This does look for pre-filing bills. So in the past, you know, starting in late fall, when we started to see bills be pre-filled, they would show up on the LRC website. It gave us an idea as to what to expect as the session started. That will not happen. It was just during the committee conversations about these bills, it appears that there will be a website that they can be posted on, but it's a little unclear if that will be a requirement or just optional depending on the sponsor's preference. But it will change the way we see legislations sort of coming out. And we may not see bills until we are actually in the session. So they've ever changed. So something to be aware of as we go forward. Something that's going to be different. I know we're actually over time just here. So are there any bills that you have questions on? I don't want to try to run through all of these. We're still waiting on actually on three. So there are three bills on the Governor's desk right now that he's not taking action on as of this morning. If any of those bills are vetoed, they will not be able to override those vetoes as they are now adjourned or in a special session until January 30. So are there any questions about any of those that were... I know that's the fastest legislative update for a light session ever.
You've been keeping us very, you've been keeping us very well informed. What are the three left?
House Bill 44.
Okay, that's one they mentioned this morning about student dental absences.
Yes, it would allow, it's permissive. It would allow districts to do those in their business policy, but it's not required. It required initially. Now it went a long way to be permissive, not required. Hospital 680, Representative Massey established a virtual computer science academy. This is an expansion of a project, an already existing project. So I know our Office of Career and General Education is very excited about that bill and looking forward. And it's already started working on, good morning, that. And then Senate Bill 102, that is a bill that requires data to be submitted to KDE, KDE that presents on, submits that, presents that data in the interim to the Education Committee. And it's again on school-based mental health services. So all three of those are still pending. And on your slides, you may see SB 150 was pending when I submitted these. It's already been signed. So this is in effect. And that's kind of the second part of the tornado relief package. So that's in more money to military affairs. I think the school districts will be able to tap into, to cover other costs associated with the storms.
Hey, Brian, could you touch real quickly on Senate Bill 1 and provisions related to the COVID sick days?
Sure.
All right, can spin that real quick. Senate Bill 1, one of the provisions, you know, as we've talked about so much about COVID leave, emergency, we have our emergency leave under regulations for exposure. Senate Bill 1, beginning March 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 22, each school district can grant an employee up to five days of paid leave if you had an active COVID diagnosis. Remember, we kind of got that predicament where there was sick leave already there to use if you were COVID positive. This provision kind of restores some of those days to some of the staff that actually had COVID positive diagnosis. So we got a certain number of days up until June 30th of 2022, I think, so.
And one thing to note with Senate Bill 1, that's, that's the only section of the bill that the emergency calls applies to.
Right.
So generally, the emergency calls applies to the entire bill. In this case, it applies only to that particular section, which is Section 6 of Senate Bill 1.
So you may have some district staff inquiring about that, and districts will have to go back and kind of adjust balances for them.
And there are a few bills that will require action on behalf of districts. Hospital 194 comes to mind, where a district is going to have to define what on track to graduate means for them, for that particular district. So related to that, we will be working on guidance documents for various bills. We will start with those that are already in effect because of an emergency call. We will try to get those guidance documents out early next month. And then we will follow the second batch of guidance documents for all the remaining bills, the majority of which will move into effect in July. Again, I haven't seen the Attorney General's opinion on whether that exact date will be, but it should be around July 13th.
We could do on items that the board can look ahead and anticipate future regulatory changes, and then maybe several of these that we may intersect with. But Hospital 1 comes to mind, can change to the kind of...
Sorry, I'm not sure I understood the question. So how come I didn't charter bills?
Yeah, so my question is, can you preview for the board changes in regulations that they may have to navigate or propagate as statutory changes?
So we'll have to definitely work on the charter bills. I think that's going to be the biggest one out there. I'm not sure. Others come to mind immediately. Yeah, I think it's...
So on the charter bill, it may be caught up in litigation fairly quickly, so.
It almost certainly caught up in litigation as probably a couple of the other high priority bills. So those in the single digits in most chambers are the high priority bills. So we're likely to see a few of those get caught up in litigation of varying sorts. So I think Senate Bill 1 being one of those. So we'll, we'll see how that goes. But we'll be paying attention to it early. We're apprised of that, so.
And Robyn, typically in the past, after the session, the superintendents would have some kind of a briefing. I saw KASS was doing a June summit. Is that when the team would have a chance to make sure superintendents are aware of all of the regulatory changes that will happen at date certain?
Yeah, we can do at the superintendent's webcast. Of course, we get shared legislative and budget update. We are actually doing a preview of that with our finance officers tomorrow.
Okay, great.
We host monthly webcasts with our finance officers at our office, and it's going to be the Karen Budget Show again tomorrow. They'll, they'll all hear information on the budget.
We'll dress rehearsal as well. Any other questions for the team? All right. Thank you so much. At this point, I'll turn it over to Todd Allen for the Hearing Officer's Report filed by the litigation report. And despite her, yes, old school.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So the Hearing Officer's Report is provided in the board's portal for your review. I will note on your regulations nearing expiration, the one set to expire June 5th, Energy, Technology, Engineering, Career Pathway, just to remind you that that one is intended to expire. The board took action in its last regular meeting, that it would allow that to expire naturally. And then about midway down on the first page of the report, you'll see the District Employee Quarantine Leave Emergency Regulation. The Administrative Regulation Review Subcommittee found that regulation deficient on March 7th. So that's no longer in effect. And Robyn just previously discussed with you some additional leave that was provided in Senate Bill 1, I think, likely based on the action of that regulation decision. I don't pause there if there are any questions about regulations that are in process.
Any other questions for Todd?
All right. Thank you so much. And just like that, you got us right back on time? So this is an opportunity for board members sharing. Based on board policy, the agenda at each meeting allows an item for us to raise issues, included on the agenda for the purposes of clarification, referred to the committee, or scheduled for future board review. I'll open it up for this discussion. It was, I happen to know Dr. Robinson has one of those items, so I'll toss it to her.
Well, thank you. Earlier in our consent agenda, we did voted to extend the process of regulation, allowing school districts to offer virtual learning for elementary students as well as others. I mean, given the, that we are, I guess, trying to come off of this pandemic that won't quite go away. So I'm not sure that, you know, we, we were extending it based on allowing school districts to plan for the next school year, but that was a one-year extension. But it raises a question that I think perhaps we would be well-served to unpack, and that is the issue of virtual learning. For whom is it best suited or well-suited? What do we know about parameters that we might want to, and guidance that we might want to offer school districts about how to use it and encourage its use, and when we might want to urge caution in terms of the use? And so I was wondering if we could begin a process of, you know, asking expressly about the impact of virtual learning, particularly on very young learners. The extent to which those parents who had been homeschooling found this to be now an essential resource associated with accomplishing homeschooling. Those are some aspects of it that appear to me, along with the concern that if it were to become used, if it were to be used casually, I, we all know that there are students for whom this would not be a good platform for learning, given the unreliability of internet access, given the need for more supervision in the home as the virtual learning experience is, is in process, and the degree of support that's really... experience is, is in process, and the degree of support that's really required to make it beneficial. So I, I think we've got a question on the horizon. I believe that we have kind of utilized the resource that is, that, you know, I certainly would advocate that we learn to maximize and leverage and also not learn how to make sure that it is not passed off as a quality learning experience for those whom we know that would not be the case.
So I know, Mr. Allen, we have expectations that we'll be working on that regulation in June, but I think it really begs a bigger question in terms of the quality experience for, and this applies only to elementary school remote learning, as I recall.
So the waiver that the board granted applies more broadly than elementary school, but that's really where it's needed because the same level of flexibility wasn't available. And Dr. Park, he says, or else to further address that, they're more experts than I am. But I think, Dr. Robinson, what you touched on, the reason that the board saw another major request at this point in time instead of just a proposal to change the regulation permanently was so that the department could gather a year's worth of data, the current school year, all of the program participants, so that the board and the department could be more informed as to make decisions moving forward. So I think that we'll take your comments back to Dr. Park, to Associate Commissioner Couch and his staff, to inform them as to how they can present the matter to the board going forward, informed by a year's worth of data that we will now have to make decisions in the future.
And if we could find out as much detail as we are able to about the nature of the students who participate, where the participation is happening, that would be really helpful, I think, in the conversation as well. Ms. McQuarrie.
As promised, very quickly, I'll report on the whole school, whole community, and whole child Subcommittee. It's a Subcommittee of the Board. We met yesterday, we always meet the day before the board meeting, to a couple of things, I'll just throw out there that we discussed, several things we discussed. It is a wraparound committee meeting for our students. One is the nutrition side of it. We'll be returning to the pre-pandemic operations. The money's available very soon, I think June 30th is when that expires, but they're prepared for that, and they have been awarded, we've been awarded Supply Chain Fund, which will be dispensed in the next couple of weeks. It's a certain amount of money per student to encourage farm to school services, that's exciting, that fresh food out there for our children. And then the other item that I highlighted, I discovered that we are 43rd in the nation in childhood immunizations.
What?
43rd in the nation in childhood immunizations, and it has become even worse throughout the pandemic. So you will start seeing a lot of pushes to, for parents to get their children in for their regular vaccinations. A little frightening.
Thank you so much. And Ms. Low.
Actually, I have three, and I'll make them, the first two really quickly. I just had the opportunity to visit with the Franklin Simpson High School in Simpson County, our school went there for a visit to see their student success teams, and to see the engagement, the ownership of Biennial from their entire faculty and staff to wrap around students who are failing or not getting grades in or who need social emotional assistance was very moving and making very proud to be on this board as a teacher representative to see our schools really buying into that, and they were doing a great job. The principals, Michael Wicks, and their special ed team, it was Kristen Hallier, and they're doing excellent work. So if anyone wants to see what they're doing, I believe they're up school and they're welcome to be people to observe and see what they're doing, so I want to give them a shout out. I also want to say Brown County was mentioned five times today at our meeting, not other people, not me, so I want to be very, I'm very proud of my county and the things we're doing. Also, I want to report out quickly about the NASCY Legislative Conference that Dr. Robinson and I were able to attend. I'd like to present quickly with the, where he rose about parent engagement in our schools and how that their data actually shows that parents, principals, and teachers really want the same things in our schools, and that's very interesting to see, and I was very happy to be a part of that conversation. We met with Dr. Thomas Stucker Woods and Tony also to meet in ED Bar, which is my home's office, to talk about our SFR funds and how we're spending those in a grade on our schools. So it's an great opportunity and a wonderful trip.
Excellent, thank you so much. And Ms. Bat?
Yes, I just want to give a quick shout out to Clark County and Dr. Moll McCovas, who's their new superintendent, and the work she's doing to present a cohesive learning environment for all across her district. And I had the opportunity to spend a day with her, her leadership team, which is made up of people from every department and from transportation, different services, from every school, and they come together and talk about issues and how they can help one another problem solve. They're working on their profile of the graduate, and last night, I had the opportunity to go to their board meeting, where each board member met with the team from, from across the district, from members of the leadership team, but then just everybody from schools, and to have sort of a dinner table conversation about different issues, barriers, and celebrations. It was, it was just a very inspiring effort to see, so I just wanted to let everybody know that was going on in Clark County.
I was texting you last week and you were in Clark County.
Oh, there I was.
Hanging out there a lot. Ms. Low.
Yes, now that the curriculum committee has appointed the Subcommittee, what is the, what's the next step?
That is a great question. I think we'll just coordinate with Meredith to be, to poll about some possible times to convene, and let's put a timeline in place that kind of pushes us between now and the June meeting. Not that things will be racked up by June, but it'll get us a forward motion between now and then.
Excellent, thank you. Mr. Trubal.
I just wanted to say, it's a great idea to have a meeting here for SDOP competitions, and, you know, we talk about 8,000 kids, 2,000 staff people from schools, and then of course, the parents, but I think we have to shout out that couch, whatever you got in the area with it. My friend David does, and turned out really well, so yeah, congratulations to him and his staff.
And I don't see Associate Commissioner Couch, but I see David and Jackie on his team, so I'm sure somebody will tell me how much we appreciate it this day. That's a perfect, thank you so much. And I loved, and our short put it out on the Disney World concourse, I saw so many teachers, of course, with all 8,000 kiddos, and then I saw a lot of principals in superintendent duty, so it was wonderful to see the village turn out. Dr. Robinson.
One of the things that we saw, Claire and I were just kind of awestruck as we looked in on some of the competitions, when they shared, when the educators shared the rubrics for judging and evaluating, I mean, these teachers know what they're doing when it comes to documenting performance. It is so amazing, and I, I mean, I was thrilled collecting these little protocols because, I mean, that skilled professional work that we are witnessing here on the pedagogy side, and, you know, maybe nobody knows it but us, but we sure ought to be telling folks that teachers do know how to evaluate student learning and know how to encourage more, more what? More ambitious learning objectives. That's all, I'm off myself.
And the thing, the complexity of the tasks that we saw, that was, that was just stunning.
Profile of a graduate, I'm telling you. Colin, I saw the same thing in Cinemania or cinema cool stuff. Yeah, so a lot of folks in that room devoted to rubrics and quality feedback, so changes the whole system.
All right, thank you all so much. At this point, I appreciate you, I appreciate the opportunity to be here. One last note to staff, this is incredible endeavor, so we really appreciate all of the details that went into today, from the tech team to the leadership committee. And I would then move it to a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Dr. Todd, thank you, we have seconds, five seconds. All those in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Thank you.